Alexis, you got one of them letters too from the Corps?
I did, I did.
I was gonna say, I got one.
Their master plan that they were doing.
I was gonna, I showed Al-Jo, I was gonna show you two.
I'll read it, if you don't mind. I'll read it as part of correspondence. I left mine at home.
And that's there. They brought that down.
Okay. Al-Jo, this was stuff from last week, and we still have a few more. Somewhere, I think I made you a copy of that agreement that was signed.
Just haven't quite got to it yet.
There you go, just their notes from the Corps. Will you take that home?
Thank you.
Go show them.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go meet in the nineteenth, which is next week, Tuesday.
You have to stay at Green Hill.
But I haven't been back to the, I was in town last week. The week before, it snowed out, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so then, I think this is about that same thing there. Okay, just like a formal letter to the guys.
Too much paper.
Yeah.
I didn't know we were gonna have all this paper.
Well, yes.
I'm just joking. I knew there'd be a lot of paper.
I think it will be easier when we move, and we can file some of it, so that no one has to haul it back and forth.
It'd be good to file, yeah, so if we have a question about something six months ago, you got it to file, yeah.
I will call the meeting to order. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For correspondence, let's see, I'll start with the bills. We have another labor for Lincoln Park Manor from Precision Electrical Contractors, but it doesn't say what for. And then, street plumbing for Lincoln Park Manor, service call for clogged sink in the existing living kitchen, 14827.
That is for replacing a ballast.
Oh, thank you. Replacing a ballast with sixty-five dollars labor there. They must've had a ballast, I assume, because I don't see that we purchased it. We each received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers, and it says that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is in the process of revising the Wilson Lake Master Plan dated November 1984. The revision would bring the master plan up to date with current policy and regulations, as well as take into account current and projected visitation and recreation trends. The master plan is the strategic land use management document that guides the comprehensive management and development of all project recreational, natural, and cultural resources throughout the life of the project. The master plan guides efficient and cost-effective management, development, and use of project lands. It is a vital link to the responsible stewardship and sustainability of project resources for the benefit of the present and future generations. The Corps is providing interested parties an opportunity to offer recommendations on issues to be considered during the master plan revision process. A workshop is being held to solicit comments on the master plan, April 4th, 2019, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Wilson Lake Visitor Center. If you can't make the workshop, please send any comment to their office. And so, I do think at least one of us should go.
You read that, right?
Yeah.
I'll keep that.
I said April 4th.
You want me to just keep this one, Alexis's letter?
Your own? Yes, please, I have one at home.
Okay. That's April.
Four, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. I do think one or all of us should go.
I wonder if we should, I guess we just spoke about it here in a minute, if we should, you know, find a public that, if they got any input on that, like, to be there for the meeting, yeah.
We have a, a letter to us dated March 5th, and it says, "I have previously submitted an application for the position of EMS director. I sent a resume, and I've noticed I had an error on it. I'm sending you this new updated resume." This person, her name is Sharon Meyer, so we have a new, an updated application to go with her old one.
Is that for HR?
It's for EMS.
Oh, EMS, okay.
So I'll give that to you, that you can file that with the current applicants. Where did you get this?
Al-Jo had that, I don't know where.
Yeah, it came in though.
Oh, okay, extra mail.
Extra mail, yeah.
Water main break rates in the USA and Canada, a comprehensive study. 12th Judicial District is going to be, giving a, what are they calling it? A facility assessment, I believe. There was a letter sent out from Judge Cudney to the 12th Judicial District for the agenda. Lincoln County Courthouse will be 8:45 a.m. through lunch, or to lunch, I should say, on March 13th. I'm gonna write that down. That's Wednesday. Do either of you want to attend that?
It would be impossible for me to be here at that time.
What day is it and what time?
It's the 13th, starting in the morning.
This week?
Yeah, 8:45, uh, Wednesday.
Well, I could, I'll try to.
There's a legislative talk in Topeka that I was maybe going to go to that day, that's why. Yeah.
This is 8:45?
Mm-hmm.
Let me write that down here. I may try to come here.
That would be good, I think, if one of us was represented. I would do it, but I would like to do my.
Eight forty-five, here, let me write on here. And, Wednesday. Okay, and it's up in courthouse, or in here?
Yeah.
Or in here, probably.
They're do, well, they're doing this facility assessment tour, so I think they're going to, well, it says the sheriff will be here. They're gonna talk about security measures.
Sure, that's fine. I'd like to be interested here. I'll try to make it.
Thank you.
They're gonna meet, I think their agenda thing was to kinda meet, the, probably development is using this room, so they'll be down in, off the extension, yeah, I'll set it up.
Oh, there, okay.
The extension office, the old one, where we're gonna go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll set it up, so when you do come, that's gonna work.
Go there, okay.
Since we don't think, have anything on the agenda right now, maybe we could talk about that for one minute. What do we wanna do with that room? I looked, I was in the courthouse, in the courtroom, and I looked at that table that's up there. Where did that come from? The, the long one?
It was back in the storage room.
I think we can use that.
I don't think three of you guys, I mean.
I do. Did you look at it? Did you go from there?
Yeah, but if you would sit a chair at it, I think you guys would be elbow to elbow.
I, I think it's longer than this.
No, it's not. Um, let me go ask.
I'm gonna have to measure it, because.
I, it looks deceiving.
Okay. I didn't pace it off or anything, but I looked at it and I thought, that definitely looks usable. But otherwise, I think we should just go with what we talked about, the one that's in there.
I mean, I could go get a tape measure and measure it really quick and see.
I think we should figure it out.
I just, I kind of put three chairs up too, and I just, you would like literally be on top of each other. Which is probably okay for the two on the ends, but the person that's in the center, if it got to be a key subject.
Well, I think if it's at least this long, this is plenty of room. But if it's not this long, yeah, I just can see what you're saying. But maybe my eyes were deceiving me, I just took a glance at it.
It's, yeah.
Here, you can have that. That's the agenda for that day, the, of the portion of hours.
It's on here.
Okay.
So you can have that one. This is right here, what you just gave us is, it's, I have it back there.
Oh, I didn't know everyone got one. I thought we had one copy, okay.
Yeah, that's very good, yeah, so you can just keep that. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, that seems to conclude the correspondence. Did either of you read this Lincoln County gravel article in the paper about Ellsworth County?
No.
It's a little deceiving. It says.
Where was that at? In what paper?
Ellsworth. It says, um.
No.
"An alternative proposal by High Plains Sand Incorporated Canoplis to remedy issues at the base of an Ellsworth County road was favorably received by the Ellsworth County Commissioners Monday during their weekly meeting. The company's vice president, Todd Whacker, suggested Lincoln County gravel be applied for demonstration purposes to a portion of 21st Road south of Skates Cemetery." So it's coming through High Plains Sand, and I'm wondering if they're purchasing it from APAC, or?
No, they're purchasing, they have a lease on a gravel pit in Lincoln County.
Do you know where that is?
I have a sneaking suspicion I know where it's at, but I don't know for sure.
A lot of my gravel I thought was not good because of clay.
Well, that's what we've been told by our own.
Seven foot and a half inch.
Okay, that's right here, it's long.
I mean, we can move these tables, man. Ladonna also said she had some white tables, I don't, still have about eight foot.
I always just stick with what's over there. I mean, I, I don't see why it wouldn't work.
I just gotta get a tabletop or.
I would like to paint over there.
Paint?
I'll do it anyway, although.
What was you wanting to do now, Al?
Well, she was measuring that table that was in the courtroom, but it's, it's a little shorter than this, so that probably is not very conducive, but.
Was you wanting a bigger one, or a smaller one, or what?
No, we can use the one that's over there with the, that had the storage underneath.
Well, it probably has no room for her legs, but they're gonna expand it and make a bigger top, right?
Yeah.
So we can sit under, and I don't wanna have my legs crushed.
Who can we assign to do that, to order the countertop?
Well, I asked John Paul to get, to go to, see if they'd come and measure, and they said with the temperature and stuff, I don't.
Who?
At the home center. I thought they ordered pieces in, but it sounds like they make them themselves.
Oh, they can cut countertop?
I, I don't know. That's what they made it sound like, um.
They probably could.
Deidre said something about it might be a problem with the lane, the laminate. Or we can go, you know, I'd like to give them a chance, but we could go to Menards or Lowe's and actually order whatever size we want. It's a special order, we have to pay for it, but.
When did they do a special order up here? But you said they make.
It sounds like they're making it.
Really?
I don't know.
Well, if they made a good one, I guess wouldn't matter.
John Paul went and talked to them.
We need to talk with Vicky more probably about that before we, exactly what we wanna do, huh?
Yeah.
I don't know if John Paul.
How about I just talk to her myself?
Why don't you? Because you know what, you know what we want more than he does. So if you don't mind, I appreciate that, yeah.
And then if they can't, then I'll go get a bid from a couple places in Saliva, if they feel like they can.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sorry about that, though.
No, that's okay. We just decided, uh, the tabletop over there, we're gonna get, you know, a new top, and that, we've decided to have Donna's gonna talk to him about, because they supposedly make their top, and we didn't know for sure, you know, you can order one like a Menard or Lowe's, but we thought, you know, she's gonna check here exactly what they got and how to do it.
I just assumed they ordered them in, but she, they said something to John Paul about they didn't know by the time they got the laminate and got it laid, whether or not it would stick very well, and it'd be wider pieces, so, which makes it sound like.
They're fabricating one themselves.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll ask, maybe it can just.
Well, for a special size, that might not be a bad idea. I mean, if they think they can do it. But what does the weather have to do with it unless they have to do it outside?
I think it's 'cause it's cold, getting it to stick, and maybe they do that in their shop, and it might not be one. Okay, so, Randy, you said you didn't get a handbook, so here's your handbook. I'm gonna have you sign your.
Oh, okay.
Well, I thought she, in the back is your handbook receipt page, so if you would sign that.
Sign what?
The very back page, pull it out and sign it for me and give it back to me. So at the same time, I don't know if you guys ever got handbooks, but I'm gonna give it to you anyways. I think we should probably start tackling one a little bit at a time.
Mine's actually in the commission room right now.
So since we were making, we just went ahead and made some new ones. And you don't have to sign the receipt, we probably have it. And today's the 11th.
What's the date today?
The 11th.
Yeah. I got this head cold, so I'm about half here.
Nineteen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you were last week, you were discussing this, and I was thinking, I never really, I looked through it, so I better do that. That's why I was requesting one.
Yeah.
He should know what you, before you start discussing stuff, probably oughta know something about it.
Yes, yes.
Might help.
Okay, let's do the minutes from last week. While I'm reading this, I do think we need to update Mr. Lowell about, um, some of the discussion we had about the EMS director position. Since that's gonna be a near, in the near future decision. And the discussion about the policy about vehicles, he needs an update on that as well. Donna, had you happened to look up the USPS website to see how to do the mailer?
I started on the website, and, um, I just, we need to go down and talk. Hannah didn't have time. I'd asked her if she could, and she just didn't get there. But, um, there were so many zip codes, and it still doesn't encompass the entire county, but I don't know if that matters. And I did know that there was eight routes of six, so you had to go on it online and pick out each route. I think I was at the right spot. And I started to do that, and then it was like, well, I don't really know which zip codes you guys want to encompass. Do you want to encompass the Corps, or do you wanna encompass even the ones that go into?
I think we should do all of them, because a lot of those people have land in the county, even if they're not voters in the county. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if the, if the zip code extends into the other county where they're registered to vote and they can't vote here, they still have land here potentially, so they should at least know what's going on. So I think we should send that out as soon as possible.
Okay.
This is for those open positions?
For the open positions, and we're going to do that with the, were we going to do that with the, um.
Your.
Nursing home.
Nursing home, well.
Public update.
That was in the paper.
I saw that.
Yeah, that'd be good, probably, because not everybody gets the Lincoln paper or the film.
So you wanna combine together?
I, can we?
If you could.
I could do that. Okay, does it need to be a postcard, or can it be paper?
No, 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 it can be, it can be a tri-fold paper, just like a letter.
Okay, so if we got your, if I took that that you had, and I know the back page had like address, but then we could insert another page, I guess. I'm assuming it's based upon weight, though.
I would think so. Do you know how that works?
What?
How, do you know, do you know how it works if you, if you're mailing out, you know, a tri-fold, and you probably can only do one paper, 'cause it's based on weight, potentially. I honestly don't.
Oh, you mean put two together, you would want to, you probably could. You'd, you need to talk to.
I used the card stock when I did it. I used the actual thin card stock, and they took it for the same. It's like, ends up being seventeen cents or something like that.
And also, we may.
Maybe we could do double paper.
Maybe, yeah, but we could maybe put on one side the opening for the.
Yeah, I think.
Positions on the other side.
This would be.
The letter, the letter that you put to the, maybe on one sheet.
Well, mine's two pages, so I think you'd have to do the mail out with the, where they stamp it to go to the address. The inside would be our notification of open positions. Then if we shoved another one in there, it would be the front and back of the nursing home issue.
Well, that'd be two sheets, then. You could talk, I would call down here, they tell you best how to do it.
Yeah.
Leanna or Deb Meyer.
And do you want a price first, or do you just want us to, we can go?
No, I think we just need to do it as soon as possible.
I don't think it's too expensive for a flyer.
No. And I don't see anything that needs changed or amended in the minutes. Randy, did you have a suggestion for the minutes?
No, I, I was gonna maybe update Al-Jo, was that, uh.
Well, first I.
But he can read here, but.
I would take, I would entertain a motion to approve them, so we can.
Yeah, I, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
March 4th, 2019.
Yeah, for March 4th, 2019, so I'm sorry.
I second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Two aye, one abstain. Motion carries. Okay. So I'll start back with the policy on vehicles. Um, we brought to our attention that the position of emergency management was utilizing travel time to and from home to work as part of being clocked in. And so Randy and I did come to the conclusion in our discussion that that would not be acceptable based on what we've read as far as federal guidelines, just our own policies within the county, what other people are doing with their county vehicles. It just doesn't really seem to be any benefit to the county to pay someone from their door to the courthouse. What we did say was, if that particular position is taking the county vehicle to an event, to a training, to a, to an event that they may be called out to go to as far as an emergency, that then that would be fine if their time starts at home. I did get an email regarding this issue, and I will share some thoughts on that.
I, um.
Go ahead.
I also want to, I contacted Bud, like Al-Jo had asked, and.
Oh.
He suggested that I contact Susan Lang with Fairness and Standards. So I have an email from Susan.
Okay.
Who talks about all of the different regs in regards to, um, to travel time and what is considered. So like, if he is going to, you guys can, can decide from there. We'll have to decide on whether or not the vehicle is exempt or not exempt. But it talks about callouts, and she can't help us with whether or not the vehicle is exempt per IRS guidelines, 'cause she's not the IRS. She said the IRS would have to be contacted for that. Jennifer made a suggestion, and so when I talked to Bud, Bud told me, "Talk to Susan Lang first and ask for her to make an opinion, and then we send an unbiased opinion." So when I talked to her on the phone, she said, "Just tell me the gist of what you want, and I'll get you all the regs that applies to it." And then I asked her about the, the vehicle usage, and she said she couldn't answer that question, that that's an IRS question. However, when she did call me, she wanted me to, to make sure that you guys were aware and you actually read page two where it starred. I starred it for you guys. She said that might help you in making your decision on whether or not the vehicle is exempt or not exempt, even though it's more about time travel. But she said whenever they go out and they audit a county, when, whether or not their time from their work in a county-owned vehicle is of issue, they always go to, this is their section right out of their handbook, that they go to. And she said, she would think that the same would apply for whether or not the vehicle is exempt or not exempt, is based upon the number of calls that he actually went out on. So she said, you know, "Give me an example," and I said, "I, I have no idea. I would think maybe ten at the most. We really haven't had that many emergencies." You know, whether watching isn't necessarily considered an emergency is considered a function of the job. And so, I didn't know that. And so she said, "Then you would weigh that based upon the number of days that they actually used the vehicle to determine whether or not it's at the sole discretion of the county or at the sole, or not discretion, but the sole, um, convenience of the county or the convenience and benefit of the employee." And so she said, "Maybe what you should do is ask your commissioners to request the number of calls that he called out, and what the purpose was of the call, so that you could determine whether or not that was truly an emergency or whether that was him just going to a meeting, or him going to a training session, or him as part of his job." And I said, "Okay." Then Jennifer suggested that maybe what we do, and I did talk to Bud again on Friday about it, is ask Bud, pose a question to him, and ask him to review the job description as it stands, and to tell us, make an opinion as to whether or not the job description, something in the job description indicates that he would be considered a safety officer. And I asked Bud if he would be willing to do that. He said he felt like that was maybe not necessarily something that he should do, because he represents the county, but that he could have a member of his law firm do it that specializes in it. So I don't know how far you guys wanna go, or if you guys wanna just make the decision yourself. But I, I just don't believe there's anything, and I've got his job description for you guys to look at. You can take it home and think about it for the week. But I just don't think there's anything in it that says that he must be a member of law enforcement, or a member of a fire department, or a member of a rescue squad, or a member of the ambulance crew. It has to work with them, but it doesn't say he has to be a member of them. But there may be some hidden language that I don't understand. And then Bud said what they would do, they would give you two things. They would give you an opinion, and then if they feel like that job description does consider him that, they will give you ways in which you can change it, or you can choose to leave it like it is. Whatever it is that you guys want to do. But my question is, is do you want me to pose the question, or would you like to pose the question?
To?
The attorney, to make an opinion.
I mean, I, the whole point of having an attorney, yes, is to get an opinion, but ultimately, the decision is ours, and we need to take responsibility for it. And I think what we discussed is pretty much accurate, even according to what I'm reading here. You know, there are citations which may exist, or, oh, citations which may assist, excuse me, according to Susan Lang. "Home to work in an ordinary situation. An employee who travels from home before his regular workday and returns home at the end of the workday is engaged in ordinary home-to-work travel, which is normal incident of employment. This is true whether he works at a fixed location or at different job sites. Normal travel from home to work is not work time." I mean, I can totally agree with that. I don't see how we can make any determination other than that. I have noticed, though, on the time cards for the highway department, that some of our employees that, with vehicles, have gone from home to job site. So we need to make that clear. It's not until you get to the job site that you're actually at work. Yes, you are allowed to use the vehicle that's provided for you, but I think that's clearly, on page two, number B, two, three, 31CO1B, where the vehicle is used in connection with emergency calls outside of normal working hours. A determination must be made as to whether the use of the vehicle is in fact for the convenience of the employee or primarily for the benefit of the employer. The frequency of emergency calls may indicate for whose convenience or benefit the vehicle is being used. So in the sheriff's department, obviously, you have regular issues where they may be called first thing out on their. So in the sheriff's department, obviously you have regular issues where they may be called first thing out on their shift where they're gonna use that vehicle and go to. That's work time. If the highway department is going out to look at a situation or the emergency management is going out to assess a situation, you know, that may be considered an emergency call, but that's, the vehicle at that point is for the pure benefit of the employee, not to us as the employer. Whereas the sheriff's department is different or the, the ambulance is different, that's a benefit to the employer. So this is very clear in my mind and we, we kind of discussed not getting paid anyone from home to work site, whether it's the courthouse or a bridge project or whether it's the courthouse or, you know, some other sort of.
And also, uh, be there, if it looks like, the way I read it too is that if, uh, there were a lot of calls, I mean, if we had a bigger, say, we have a bigger county, more population and our emergency man and person was called a lot from their home, you could almost justify it like a police officer then. But I don't see that here, like in county.
Well, and he clearly stated last week that he wasn't going on all of the calls that the predecessor went on, you know, at, at the time.
And in, in my opinion, his position at that time is not a first responder. So that's not emergent. It's really an assessment that he's doing and so that happens, it'd be nice, the sooner, the sooner it happens, the better, but it's not the first responder responsibility that others have. This is very clear under thirty-one C O one A. In certain situations, an employee is responsible for a vehicle and its equipment and for having it at the work site at proper time. The employer may permit the employee to drive the vehicle to and from home. In situations of this type where the permission is granted for the employee's own convenience and the travel is within the normal commuting distance of emp- of the employee's area, time spent in driving is not hours worked. I, I agree with everything here. I mean, I don't think that I don't think that we have any special circumstances that we need to address as far as what this is saying.
Currently, the highway department, uh, have vehicles, but they're, they don't charge, uh, their billing from home to the, to the shop.
No.
They're not supposed to, right? They're supposed to.
I, I believe that they're charging from the time that they get to the shop and they begin to work.
Then, then, no, and then if they go out with that vehicle out of sight, that's obviously paid then, but not from home to the shop.
I mean, yeah, the, the benefit to the employee is to be able to, that you're not required to ha- to provide your own personal vehicle for your job.
Right.
So even being able to go home and, and park the vehicle at home is purely a benefit to the employee. So I don't think his, his vehicle is exempt in emergency management, similarly to the highway department. Mr. Wallace, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I, I think so too. I don't, I don't know that he should be paying the time he leaves home to.
And what about the?
Yeah, this, you know.
What about taxing it as a fringe benefit as far as mileage? You do it by mileage, correct?
We don't have any choice doing.
Well, which, right now, that's what, you guys have it exempt as though he is a, um, public safety officer. But when you read the definition of the public safety officer, his position doesn't follow in.
No, we do, we, we, what are we doing to the highway department?
They are taxed.
They're taxed as a fringe benefit.
I don't know that there's any difference myself.
Correct. I would agree with that.
I, I don't see the, the difference there myself. I mean, it is for, there is some advantage for us to have him take that vehicle to his house in case there is a major storm in some part of the county and where he is closer instead of having to come into Lincoln to change vehicles and to do that. I mean, that is, that is our advantage, uh, for him, you know. But.
But that happens less frequently.
Paying by giving him a vehicle, that's, you know.
Right. And, and that emergency situation that you're referring to happens less frequently than normal travel in that vehicle. So I think you can't, one has to outweigh the other. It's more for normal use than it is for emergency use, for sure.
So what I, what I think you guys need to do is number one, I think you guys need to set what that, what people's hours are. Because that's how we didn't catch it. You know, he, he made that standpoint, I've been doing this for four and a half years and it's never been a problem. Well, that's because nobody caught it.
If I may interrupt right there, I did get some feedback, um, La- LaDonna was kind of making some comment on what she had either watched on the video, the commission video or read in minutes or something, but she basically said, in her opinion, um, no comp time should be allowed, no hourly wage person should do comp, even her own employees. And she said she agrees that, that we should pay overtime instead of doing, instead of allowing comp time at all. And then salary, non-elected officials such as herself, um, should be able to work a forty-hour week, however that works out. And then if they work under, they have to take leave time for the forty, and if they work over, they don't get paid because it's salary. Um, she said holding to an eight-hour day won't work. So she's basically saying she doesn't agree with having a different policy for each, um, but here's the thing, isn't John Paul hourly?
Yes.
And see, we can't have an hourly maintenance janitorial position that can't do his own forty-hour week schedule. I mean, it's just, we can't say that that's not an exemption. It is an exemption. There's snow removal, there's lawn work to do, things that need done early in the morning before anyone is in the courthouse, things that need to stay late at, you know, a reason you may need to stay late afterward. So I don't necessarily agree with the opinion that we can't have separate policies per department because.
You can have separate hours, but identify what their hours, what their work hours are supposed to be when they're here. And, and I, I think if we would talk to LaDonna when she comes here today about that, I don't think that she's saying, like David implied last week, that eight hours is eight hours, it doesn't matter when I work the eight hours. It does, in a sense, matter when you work the eight hours. I mean, you guys as supervisors should be able to say, this courthouse is open from eight to four-thirty, your working hour should be eight to four-thirty with a half an hour lunch. Now, will there be times where you were at a meeting and so some days you may not necessarily be here? Yes. Maybe if the meeting is, because I think what she's trying to say is if we're gone to a meeting, then we should be able to take some time off. I, I don't have a problem with that, but.
But in other words, that is comp time.
Yes, it is, in the week that it occurs.
So that's what we need to establish.
Yes.
You know, within this particular week, if you're, if you put in a twelve-hour day on Monday, then you have a four-hour leeway some other time during the week.
And technically, comp time doesn't carry o- or doesn't consist until it's, even though you're comping it in that week, it isn't really comp time, what's considered nationally as comp time, till the next week when you're getting overtime for those hours and then you're doing time and a half for the following.
Or in our case, when we pay once a month, it really all falls under the same pay period anyhow, because you get to the, like you said, I mean, for different departments, you either get to the forty or you get to the forty-three, then depending on your leave time, you're using this or you're using that or what kind of leave it is, you're using this type of leave, that type of leave, you know.
So, um, but I, I still think that you should have departmental hours. You know, I don't think if you ask LaDonna, if she's saying, should you be able to work whenever you want to, she's gonna say that. She's gonna still say she needs departmental hours. That is how you catch errors like this. If he had been working from four to four-thirty every single day, we would know that. Or even if you, if you guys want to say seven to four for him, I just, I don't understand why you would be anything different if he's in the courthouse than what the courthouse hours are. It's just my personal opinion, but that doesn't mean it's right.
Better like in the case of Jean Paul, we, uh, he may need to have variable hours because he may not like, he may like scrub the floors when during normal business hours, so it may benefit him to be earlier or later, correct, so.
Now, our, our former, a long time ago janitor, she split her hours. So she came in half the time, so she was never here during working hours. So she was, um, I think she was here from six-thirty, I mean, she was here a little bit during working hours, but like six-thirty to nine-thirty, and then she came back and worked in the evening. When they hired Pete, he was coming from Sylvan and they didn't feel like it was right to ask him to split his hours. So all the courthouse staff picked up, starting to close, take down the flags, lock up the doors, and now they've got a light on the flag, so we don't have to take that down anymore. But, um, you know, maybe the question is, is, is that right that we have that? Um, he's claiming that he can't clean while, while he's in our offices, but some of the things aren't getting cleaned to begin with. So maybe the five-thirty to eight isn't enough time. Maybe he needs to work overnight or work in the evening after hours and you guys can set those hours. I just think that you guys need to set those hours. I don't think you should have employees telling you when they're going to, when you, when they're going to work. Now, can you, because you're changing, can you like provide input with him? Yes, but then the next position needs to be the same hours.
Be consistent.
Yes.
And also, maybe like you were saying, we, uh, some, we maybe should have a job description of what would needs to be done daily, weekly, because, uh, some of these things maybe aren't being completed, uh, to our satisfaction, right? Maybe we should discuss that too.
And employees here in the courthouse, they won't come down and tell you guys, but if you talk to them one-on-one, they might visit with you about it. And they're not willing to do a survey in which they're writing because he, people will know what their handwriting is and they don't feel like that's fair. But they will say, why are we paying employee benefits fun, plan? My issue is I don't want all of the responsibility dropped on my office. That tends to be what happens. And I get it. They say, wouldn't it be cheaper just to contract out the mowing and contract a cleaning company to come in and thoroughly clean? Um, when you do a cleaning company, normally they bring multiple employees and they're in and out within a couple of hours. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. But it is, there's discussions that have been over and over and over again and, and then each of us being responsible for our own offices.
As long as, we've always had a, uh, our own custodian or maintenance person here, hired as an employee for the county. We've never contracted out before, that you know of, I mean.
When Shirley Behrens was our janitor, they contracted out, well, I shouldn't say they contracted out. They hired, you know, somebody to come in and mow because she didn't mow. But, um.
So what do we need to do to change the status of the emergency management vehicle and how do we want to announce working hours? I think that's where we are, right?
Yes. I, I think that you guys need to make a motion on the emergency management hours because I don't think that he's just going to change what he's doing without you guys making.
Do you have that job description?
I please do have. You know, when he said something about it's, it's not, or in his job description that he has what his hours are, there isn't any job description that has what their hours.
But do we have it in the handbook?
Um, that's a good question. I started to look that up and I forgot.
Pay periods, overtime, holiday pay, breaks, time worked, hours, number four, page four. The individual department heads will arrange specific hours of operation for each department. The supervisor establishes the schedule for personnel uh, in each department or the department head based upon the volume of work and ability of personnel. Offices may be closed for lunch based on the availability. Okay, so we can add in there, that section that these are the working hours and the individual department heads may arrange exemptions when necessary. How about that? That's page four, go on.
And in his job description, it says that you guys are his supervisor.
Oh, yes, that would be a direct department under the commission.
Supervision, the employee acts under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners.
Here's where it's confusing. Under marginal functions, it says works in conjunction with other public safety departments and interested parties. So it's cla- this is kind of classifying by saying other public safety. So just strike other. Works in conjunction with public safety departments. And then there's not a question as to how we're categorizing it, because it, by all of the other definitions that we've received, we can't justify, as you said, maybe ten to twelve calls a year that are actual emergencies that require the level of planning and coordination that he's been studying. The rest of them are fire department calls, sheriff department call, where they don't need a headquarter-type logistics person involved. This is for a more massive undertaking. Like we, like we had, when we had the fires out at the lake, uh, was that two years ago now? I can't believe how long it's been. But he was very helpful in doing that strategic type planning. But that doesn't happen but once or twice a year, if it's something to that magnitude.
Does he coordinate, like if there's a fire out, out in a, you know, brush fire? Does he the coordinate with the fire department on what to do or do they do it on their own or, do you guys know?
I think they're doing it on their own unless they ask him for help.
Fire chief in his district it is, is in charge.
Basically doesn't, so, so.
He's in charge.
Or even the manage, emergency manager really doesn't.
I, I think.
When they need help, the he.
He's supposed to be there to gather resources for them. So if they would call and say, I need more trucks, this is how many trucks I need. It's up to him to contact other agencies to get those more trucks.
Or, or other counties if we need help.
Especially if it's other counties.
Other counties, if we had a big fire and you go.
Especially then, i- if it's, if we're working.
I was wondering.
Through our own borders, past our own borders.
Yeah, I was, I questioned it's kind of who's the point of contact for, is it the, uh, fire chiefs or, uh, or the emergency management person or?
I think it's the fire chiefs until it becomes where there's so many agencies, then I think they have like a command center set up where the fire departments, uh, report to the command center and then they tell them where to go.
And also if there would be injuries or somebody hurt out in a house fire, then would he be contacting our EMS people too or?
Normally, when the fire department goes out, the EMS is already going out.
They all, they all go together, huh?
Yeah, uh, I think that's kind of the standard protocol is that when they page fire, ambulance always goes and they do what they call standby. So some of those runs that Brandon was talking to you about last week, those are gonna be standby because they consider every, every time the ambulance leaves the shed, a run.
And the sheriff's department probably gets involved also.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, see, I'm having an issue reading, under essential functions, you go down third up from the bottom, plans, directs, and trains or schedules training for personnel in proper disaster and emergency procedures. Now, there, there's where I have an issue. We don't have personnel in that particular department. So are we expecting this person in this position to do that for other departments? If so, what is the order of hierarchy? Because the elected official of the sheriff is on his own, so that's not, you know, there's not gonna be a, an oversight by emergency management over the sheriff. Now, we do directly, uh, cover, you know, w- we are, there were, how do I wanna say that? We oversee the EMS department directly. Therefore, if we instructed the emergency manager to schedule training for them, then that should be followed. However, emergency management is not well-versed or educated in those particular fields of being able to do the training for the E M T and those specific type things. So that doesn't really work. So what are we considering, planning, directing, and training or scheduling training? You know, for me, right now, it seems like that's only for himself.
Well, he did set up this training where they're all, a bunch of us, several of them are gonna go to Texas here coming up, right, that, that major, uh, training, uh, program at Texas where they're gonna go down. Now, he kind of coordinated that, didn't he?
He, he, yes, he found that information and, and put it out there for them to sign up. That, you're right. I guess where I'm going with it is one time, he wanted, he had come in and asked about traveling and being able to, you know, have that leave, being paid to leave to go to a seminar where he was gonna get some reimbursement for his travel, et cetera. And then I asked about him coming back and being able to regurgitate that information. He said, well, I'm not qualified to do that. I don't know if anyone remembers that particular meeting, but I take an issue with that because we are spending money and time to provide one person information that is not necessarily shareable or being shared or what happens when that person leaves that position. Then we've invested, a lot of our pay time goes to training that doesn't stay with the position. It leaves with the person. So then we're, we would have to reinvest, let's say this job.
With every job.
No, not necessarily.
Yes, it does. We, we found that out. We, we found that out with the human resources, that when someone leaves, they take knowledge with them.
Okay.
And that's all, that's all we can, I mean, that's with everything, they take knowledge with them.
But there's a difference between coming back from a seminar and not sharing the information with anyone versus being a department head that then instructs your department.
I'm not sure that he said he hadn't shared, he just couldn't train them because he didn't have the credentials to do it, you know? Some of this requires just like uh, teaching C, CPR. I mean, you, you have to, you may go to the class, but you can't go instruct someone else because you haven't got certified to do it. I think that was what he was saying.
But could he offer what he learned at that training?
Uh, I, I think he could, I think he could, but he couldn't, you know, for points or things like that, you couldn't do it.
You know, are you, are you training him or are you offering the knowledge that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting a training where you get people certified. I understand that's a whole nother level of function, but what I'm saying is, we're investing in these trainings that don't come to fruition locally for anything.
He, he also stated in that meeting that, that, or he implied that people refuse to come to the training. He set things up, but people refused to come. I'd like to know what he invited me to attend because I've never been invited to anything besides everything that I've been invited to has been, he's come to you guys and you guys have said, everybody must go. Um, so, and, and so.
The only thing I can think of is, he was going to plan an emergency, a practice drill for like an active shooter in the courthouse. And he wanted to do that in conjunction with some outside, out of the county agencies. And our own sheriff's department was not comfortable with that because they weren't put to be the lead in charge of that situation. That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head, Dawn.
And but I don't know if he not, if he not employees or if he not. But my, my understanding, and maybe that needs to be, to be defined, but for personnel, my understanding is that is the volunteer firefighters, volunteers and county personnel. But that, that's just my personal opinion. Um, now, the person, like he called him the predecessor of the one before. He had training sessions where he, you know, like that uh, thing that David told you you hadn't taken yet. They, we went out to the nursing home and we all took it together. Does that make sense? He had training sessions where you all did that together. Now, I get that it's convenient if it's online because it'd probably be a little bit more convenient for me if I took things like that online than to spend all day in training. But I don't like training, um, not like that where you have to throw yourself out there and be, I like my kind of in the box type thing. So, um, but that doesn't mean that David's wrong in how he's training. I mean, if he should be going to.
He's providing the information, right? No, and I don't have a problem with that, I guess.
But that's how I define personnel, but maybe we need to define that even further.
What hours does he think he works? His scheduled hours is, did he say?
He did not say, he basically said from the time he leaves home.
Eight hours is eight hours is eight hours.
Right, from the time he leaves home until the time he gets home, whatever his eight hours has been. And then I believe what he insinuated is that he's been including part of his eight hours as if he does storm watching or does something after hours. Is that, because he doesn't get over act.
He does not get overtime, but I can tell you if you reviewed and, and, I don't know how much you want to get down to, but if you reviewed all of his time cards, there isn't hardly a single week that he doesn't work supposedly overtime. Now. I feel like we should be in the executive session, but.
Well, I could, let's not talk about the person as much as the position because I'm going back to, you know, essential functions. And if we're going to require this position to have office time, which I think, when I've asked in the past what this position does normally when there's not an extra function going on, it is quote unquote, office time. There is a lot of work that goes into the paperwork and the grant requests and the keeping up with the, all the changes.
It's still considered administrative, but not actually, um, can't think of the other word that's not administrative.
Clerical or?
Well, it's administrative work. He's, he's doing the clerical side of it, but then you have the manual laborers. So it, it's a weight of whether or not the position.
But what do you think that ratio is from desk work to field work, let's call it? You know?
I honestly don't know what he's providing you guys when, when he's reporting to you monthly. It's a hundred percent administrative because how, how many times has he told you that you responded on a call? Maybe one month out of the past ten?
So, so in this position, if we're saying it's probably ninety, ten, this emergency manager, you know, and, and we could, we could call and ask around. I mean, I know, what concerns me looking at it at a whole is, Saline County has one emergency manager and they have twenty thousand people. Now, I don't know how many people she has in her office, but I don't think it's that many, if any. So I guess I'm wondering like, where are we missing what other functions can be done in the ninety percent of the non-fieldwork time? In other small counties out west, I think I mentioned this before, at least one that I know of has combined, their emergency manager is also the working director of the EMS department. In other words, doing that clerical work for both of those offices from nine to fi, or eight to four thirty, excuse me. So, if there's that kind of time gap available in this position, I think we kind of need to know what is expected. Cause right now, all this says under essential functions is all this communicative stuff, but that's more in an active sense of field work. You know, communicates with governmental entities, communicates with the county commission, coordinates with blah, 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 blah. Federal and state programs, you know, but that's all regarding incidents. If we're talking about just a daily issue, it basically just says establishes and maintains a network of expert advisors. Okay, so that's all communication related for the event that is all hypothetical. But the regular stuff is preparing reports and updates and guides as directed by KDM, KDEM or FEMA. Plans, designs, executes, maintains and updates, emergency operations plans. I know that's being, that's being done in this position. Maintains and works with LEPC, that's being done in this position. But on the daily, I guess, is what I'm getting at. What is the daily paperwork requirement that's happening? And therefore, what are the office hours associated with that? Because if someone has a question, they should be able to make that contact at a certain time during the day.
You know, you asked him the one time what, what he does during the time, and I think he said this in an open meeting.
He did, it was open.
That he um, educates himself daily. I think that's part of the problem. I, I think that he goes to all these trainings because when he is here, he doesn't know what to do. That position doesn't know what to do. And that's not his fault, that's the board's fault.
Right, we need to have an expectation.
Because we don't understand the position enough to know what it is that they should be doing and providing.
I have an idea, let's invite, because I, I met her, she's very uh, well versed and I don't know how long she's been doing it. Let's invite the Saline County, keeping in mind that it's a twenty thousand person population. But let's invite her to speak to the board to give us a little more insight on this position. And maybe we can do a little comparison as far as what we're lacking in our job description for time requirements. Does that make sense? Let's reach out to the, um, her name is escaping here, Hannah, her name's Hannah, from Saline County.
Are you saying twenty thousand as the county?
Population, isn't it?
We got fifty thousand, Saline County or more.
Are you sure?
Salina has fifty, so.
Oh, so then it's just Salina with twenty, the whole county's fifty.
Salina's fifty, the county's probably sixty or more.
Are you sure?
Oh yeah. Salina's been sitting at fifty for about ever, for a long time.
I thought there was this big race between Hutchinson and Salina to get to fifty and nobody did.
Well, they, they neither did get to fifty thousand, but made it, made it different, but they were, they're right under.
Okay.
And then with Elseline, the southeast of Saline and.
The whole county makes it more than fifty thousand.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, well then, we're really a drop in the bucket and we should not compare ourselves to Salina for anything.
Three thousand people here.
As a full-time position, when you're asking.
Well, that was, yeah, that's part of my question.
Saline County, the last twenty ten census was fifty-five thousand six hundred and six.
Wow.
Fifty-five?
Wow.
Yeah, I knew there were fifty, oh yeah.
Wow, that is more than double what I was thinking, that's amazing. Okay, so we'll come back to that, we have more work to do on the job descriptions. Welcome, Michael and Tanner.
I'm gonna take a little.
Sure, we'll.
A little break.
Have a little five minute recess here.
Take care of the coffee.
Dom, that's a very dangerous machine you put out there. I know the hot bullies are like calling my name, it's like, God, come eat me, come eat me.
Where'd you get that?
Um, that's that place that Sharon had um, mentioned from Ellsworth. So they kind of were on the hmm, 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 but um, we called him or Hannah emailed him again and they finally said they would go ahead and try. The only thing that they did ask is if we could put up some signs that says, many machine in the, in the basement.
Yeah.
Since it's not on.
Advertise it, like, yeah.
And it's not, but, and then I chose, that's where the pop machine used to be at. And I didn't realize how loud it really was until, um, you know, I kind of feel sorry for Ashley who had to work right outside the door from it because I bet in that metal, because her ceiling is metal, that she probably was just like twenty times the noise.
Yeah.
Um, I just decided we're going to put it back over there because then, because it is hard to hear when, when it's twenty, it's hard to hear.
And I didn't look in the boiler room, did you find a refrigerator?
No, not yet. I put out an in search of, um, somebody sent me, somebody had one for a hundred dollars in the way on their BuyCell trade. But I'm not a member of their BuyCell trade and I haven't been accepted yet, so.
Okay.
But we're still looking. Somebody said the Mars has used one for days though. I'm assuming when they remove, when they deliver, but still. I just, I don't, then I have to worry about how am I going to go get it, so.
So, prior to having our open session, um, with our engineer and everything, I would like us to go into a five minute executive session because we have some unfinished conversation about some employment situations within the department. Um, and I will make the motion and I only need five minutes if that, I, I'm sorry, but if that works for you, Michael, it'll be just you.
Yeah.
Um, so I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing, let's say, um, management positions within the highway department pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
I'll second.
With, um, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With the public works director, the commission and the county clerk to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
I'll second.
All those in favor, vote aye. Aye, not opposed.
Number one, we gotta find somebody that can fill the shoes. And potentially bigger shoes than what he wore, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, so it's time to create a, a new ad. Thank you, I apologize.
Um, I do have here a gravel agreement, we do have two gravel agreements that are due this year. Uh, they both.
Oh.
We s- we set them due at the end of March.
Yeah.
Some people chose one, two, three years. Uh, this one was one of the one years, we have another one that's a one year that we have not received back. Uh, this would be on the Barbara Holmes pit.
I, uh, I think maybe we would, um,
Sign them on the same day?
I would, I would suggest we wait and see if we can't get them both.
Okay.
And, and do them the same, and if you need to communicate with her that.
Yeah, I think she'll be fine with that, I visited with her this morning.
Um, and I also think we need to set the price of gravel at that time too. Bless you.
God bless you. Um, so you're saying compile these as they come in and sign them on the same day?
I'd say, I would say two, yeah. It's the end of March, right?
We have two meetings, we would have the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth remaining.
Yeah, so I, I would say.
Are you in contact with the other one that has their one year expiring now?
I have visited with them, they mailed out and.
They intend to continue?
Under my intentions, yes, or my belief, yes.
Okay.
It's not a guarantee until it's in, but.
Okay.
Where is this, oh, it's on here, West Taffey.
Yeah, it's just uh, west of, or east of Maryland Bells, the.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Do you get the Ellsworth paper?
I do not.
Did you know that they're purchasing Lincoln County gravel?
Did not.
I'll let, I'll give that to you, you can look that over, it'll be interesting under, uh, analyzed. Diana, what did you have for us today?
Oh, can I get a copy of this so I can?
You can take that.
That doesn't, that really just states that, Ellsworth has some of a sandy gravel, they're complaining that they want some more clay rock to blend with it, that's basically what it's saying in a nutshell. We have just the opposite problem, we got too much clay, in my, my opinion.
Maybe, uh, yeah, I'll definitely need to review this.
Well, and what needs to be analyzed is that company is obviously making a mixture based on what they're purchasing out of here and what they have. So, because they're purchasing it to that company who's going to then apply it to the road base, is what it reads.
Okay, uh, I, like I said, I haven't read this article, but I'll look it over. I'll tell you right now, I am working with this company right now to secure lease on a pit within this county, so. Okay.
We also need to probably check on prices around the counties when we set this gravel price, first of April to.
Prices around the county, what do you mean?
Around the area.
Surrounding com- competitive competition, is that what you're saying? Didn't we do that the last time when we changed it?
We did do some looking. There's very few that use anything natural around, you know? Ellsworth does sand, there's some milled rock up in Mitchell and Osburn County, they don't, but it's a different style, you know, they take in a milling machine.
But I guess I just want what the landowners are getting, I think we have to be competitive. You know, you know, we, we got what we got, you know?
My concern with that, Mr. Wallace, is that we did not.
But we have got to be competitive or people are going to come into this county and haul it out.
My concern is that we did not set anything in the budget for that type of projection. I mean, we, we used even the numbers from the prior year that we had not, we didn't double the budget line item to compensate for purchasing the exact same amount of gravel the second year at double the price. So, I'm a little concerned about, for the rest of the year.
Well, I think we, we set the budget for the road department and that's what was going to come out.
You know, I, I guess, um, outside of an executive session to discuss uh, some proprietary information that might be helpful for what you guys are discussing, but I mean, I do have a little bit of information that you guys might find interesting.
I think we need to know that, within the next week or two.
Yeah, let's do it on the eighteenth.
Okay, yeah, I guess we've used quite a bit of time already, so. And the only other thing I have for you today is, uh, you know, we've discussed this several times about the back hill, excuse me, tobacco at the landfill. My recommendation was that it needed to be replaced. You guys asked me to seek the prices and we've went a couple of different routes on it. After visiting with department head, he still believes that he, in his best interest, would rather repair the one that's there and continue to use it. Uh, he has asked me to make arrangements for our mechanics to work on it and to get the cylinders removed and take it into Genders.
Where's Genders?
Salina, it's a hydraulic shop.
Okay.
I guess outside of your guys' decision otherwise.
Why does he, why does he feel that this, that it is more valuable than to upgrade?
I've asked the same question and I can't get a answer other than
is it because the controls?
Doesn't want to spend the money.
Is it because the controls are going to be different and it's gonna, he's going to have to relearn how to, to pack or?
Does that tobacco leave the site?
Not very often.
So it's mostly used for the pushing of the garbage, right?
Ninety percent of packing and pushing the garbage, and it gets you. And it gets used for other things there, too, but, you know, it goes to the tree pile sometimes, it pushes up concrete, it might push up some steel. It'll go turn the gra- or the rec- recycle with the grass and stuff like that, but. You know, I, that was my recommendation, just for the fact that we could easily put ten to fifteen thousand dollars into it here and then the engine or transmission fails. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it was not my recommendation not to replace it, but if you guys so choose to want to proceed that way, that will be your decision.
What, what's it gonna cost to replace it?
It's gonna be over a hundred thousand.
Over a hundred thousand?
Near that hundred thousand. We never have got a firm number yet because we've just been.
But that's for brand new.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're thinking that probably we're gonna spend, what, this time?
It could easily be ten to fifteen. You know, replacing cylinder, or not necessarily replace, we need to re- remove, overhaul, and reinstall the cylinders. There's about three or four that need done now that are leaking bad enough that. It's not good.
Have we had trouble with the engine or the transmission? Has it ever been?
I don't believe anything major's been done to it.
Hell, has it?
Ninety-two, I believe.
How many hours?
I can't remember what it was now. Seven, eight thousand maybe, I can't remember.
Has it ever been in to have any?
Nothing major, you know, they've been fighting with the air conditioner and some stuff like that. It's, it's got a huge tendency to overheat, so I know they've got it hot a few times. You know, it, it's, I don't wanna fight with the, the department on, I mean.
I don't either. I don't like the cost of a new one either, but I.
I, I understand that.
When you hit that seven, seven, eight thousand, we've not touched the motor. It makes me nervous. Be right honest, if we haven't had it in and had it checked and.
You know, and, and that's just initially. There's all those other things that need to be done, you know, the pins and everything, it's very worn out. The joints are sloppy and it, you know, hoses, you know, before you're done, you've rebuilt the whole thing on an old shell if you're not careful. And if you do that, you're gonna have the cost, more of a cost than the new one would have you in the beginning. I understand both sides. It's a tough decision to make. You know, nobody likes to spend that initial dollar upfront, but it can save you a lot on the backside.
This is the one at the landfill now?
That's correct.
Does it get used a lot?
Uh, they use it daily.
Just to push the trash in?
Pushing trash, compact the trash.
Really, there's not a lot of hours per day or per week to get?
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
You know, it varies. Correct.
Well, call it crazy, but I think a minimal investment right now, if it's gonna buy us a few years, sounds like a good idea. And we can put our efforts financially towards something else.
That's, that's your choice. I'll let you make that decision.
So what are you for?
I mean, I, I think if the department head is advocating that we go ahead and get it repaired, if it's a fifteen thousand dollar investment and it buys us two to three years, potentially, I mean, I know we have other money that we're going to have to put into it, but if you're not, you know, if, if our engine and everything is going to sustain us for two to three years, that's a good return on our investment.
Well, I think.
I can guarantee that it will, though. That's my.
There's no guarantee with anything ever, so.
I understand that, I know.
But I don't guarantee that's not. You get a brand new one, it'll blow up tomorrow, too.
But it'll be warranty.
Yeah.
Tree could fall on it, you know.
The thing is, is I don't think they have that many hours a week to use it. Uh, you start it up, push the trash in for half an hour and you're done. And so they probably just, what, five hours a week? So that's not much. I think, too, we should do the, uh, repair way. Just because if you were using it all day, I'm really stressing that I could see you're having an engine transmission problem. But, but to push the trash in a pit for half an hour a day, if that much. W- we're not using it that much. So I think repairing it'd be way to go, too, in my personal opinion.
Okay, can I make just a comment?
So, this is getting worked on the backhoe, worked on.
They're gonna have to use another backhoe. Those are foam filled tires that prevent whatever they prevent, so they have, they're no special tire to keep them from being, I'm sure you've heard. If they would take their backhoe from, like, the Highway Department and borrow it, then everybody needs to be aware that the landfill probably should pay for the repairs on all the tires while this is being repaired, because I'm assuming it's gonna take a couple of weeks.
Easily, it could easily take a couple of weeks.
Just kinda to make you guys aware. Because I don't think the Highway Department's tires are those special tires, are they?
No. You know, that backhoe might get used a little more someplace else if you didn't have those foam filled, just because, you know, they ride rough when you go down the road and stuff like that, you know, it's, you limit how much you rode it just for that fact, but to work that application, you need those tires or else you're constantly doing repairs.
Not that that's a bad thing, just so you know. I would think that we would pay for those repairs, or they would pay for those repairs. I'm sure there will be repairs, just gonna tell you.
Oh, and they need to be made aware of the situation, I mean, that they should be taking extra precaution.
So is that the direction this board would like me to go?
At this time, yes, from what I see.
Now, Joe, you have a opinion?
No, I guess I don't, I, I don't know, I, I don't want to, but I, I do know that when we're reaching seven, eight thousand hours, we, we are treading on, on treacherous ground, in my opinion, but. I guess what concerns me the most is that it's never been taken in and checked, you know? And maybe this is when we do that, but we're gonna talk about thirty to forty thousand dollar bill probably.
Easily. And our closest dealer now is.
For checking?
If an engine transmission would go.
Well, yeah, just to make sure the main bearings are all right.
Wait, but you're saying that's the, gonna be the bill for the check? You said we're talking a thirty, forty?
If you're to take the engine down.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do all those checks and check it.
Strip your hands off and.
Yes, I mean, you know, it's.
You know, it's just not a visual inspection.
Thirty or forty, including the fifteen that you're talking, not thirty or forty, in addition to?
Just addition. I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna cut, if we're going to do a good check on it, we're gonna put thirty thousand dollars into it. From what repairs have already been mentioned to me.
Where at? Where would this be taking place?
Yeah, I don't.
The engine transmission would have to go somewhere up in Nebraska, since the place.
What is it? What is it?
It's a JCB.
Oh.
You talking about overhauling this stuff or just checking it?
He's saying it's a thirty to forty thousand dollar bill just to get it checked.
You talking about?
By the time we do all the cylinders and by the time you, and whatever else they.
Oh, I'm not questioning it, I don't know. I'm just trying to.
Are you talking about rebuilding it, overhauling it?
No, I'm not talking about, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, they're, they're gonna have to check, they're gonna check the power, they're gonna check the main bearings.
Who do you go through to do, do something like that? Who have you gone through?
We run John Deere, so.
Okay.
That's where we go. That's where we go. I mean, you know, I, you know, it, it's, once those things go in the shop, they're expensive, you know? But, you know, and maybe, maybe we take our gamble and just do the cylinders and be done with it. That, you know, but I'm just saying that if we get those kinda hours, you may be looking at something.
We can send it to Salina for what it needs now.
Well, we can remove the cylinders and send those down.
That's, okay, but I'm saying we don't need to, I mean, Nebraska is, if we're going to do the, the engine transmission check.
Should. I don't see why Genders can't repair those. I haven't checked with them, but they can usually repair about any cylinder. You know, it's, it is a British machine, they're, everything's metric on it, so it is set up different. They should be able to get what we need.
Okay, well, let's move forward with the repairs and see what you find out in that process.
So when you say you're gonna do this check, what exactly is, uh, included in this check? Taking the engine apart or the cylinders out and all this?
I don't think they, they don't take them, they look, they'll look at the injectors and they'll look at all that stuff.
Just to, just to check it.
Yeah, just to check it over good, you know, and, and you always find some things wrong, I mean, that's all.
Well, yeah, with.
You know, I, I mean, that's, my, my experience with the tractors, you know, we try to do them at, at three or four thousand hours. We try to take them in and make sure they're up, you know, we got one that's close to ten thousand hours now. Been lucky, we haven't had any major problems.
Do we know how many hours we're looking at?
Seven thousand, we got, he said that.
That's rough, I, I can't remember for sure.
Well, probably somewhere in the ballpark.
It's got quite a few.
Yeah, well, which is up there.
Twenty-seven years old.
Yeah, it's almost thirty years old.
Yeah.
When they make stuff better, so let's just hang our hats on engineering of our predecessors.
All right, what do you all got, Tanner?
Um, bridge number eighty-seven, going out west of town here. Um, they're gonna try, best case, try the deck four on Thursday, um, but there's some rain in the schedule.
Tomorrow and Wednesday.
Yeah, um, so if that happens, uh, it's gonna get pushed off. Um, so they're getting close to having that bridge deck four. They plan on bringing the concrete from Russell and then coming in from the south side. We're gonna have a guy out there testing concrete, making cylinders, all that jazz. Yeah, so that's an update on that project. And then last time we talked about the landfill, uh, we're putting together some scope items to do the survey and stuff. I don't quite have that done. And then we ran over to the deeds office and found a boundary survey, um, so we're gonna be putting that together.
So is that gonna be a possibility to do, to just go ahead and block off all of that forty or whatever that, how many acres that is?
Yeah, so we'll.
In one, in one application?
Yes, yes, yep, so we would, um, the last engineer, I think they just did like a, they just designed a cell.
Right, we could just copycat that and go through and basically get permitted so that we're grandfathered for the whole section, okay.
Right, so, yep, so we'd come and survey the whole forty acres and lay the design out for the whole forty acres. So you guys aren't coming back and paying every time you've gotta do a cell, somebody can do it. And then get that all approved from KHE, um, and then go from there. Yep, so I'm working on that, uh, hopefully next month they'll have it for you guys. And, uh.
And, and your bridges, and Michael, you may know, too, do you have like a schedule of what bridges you got coming up to work on? And a, a priority list of what bridge you're gonna do after you've, you know, for what, you're working on some right now, right?
Yes.
We, how do you determine which bridge you're gonna do next and what after that? Do you have a priority schedule of what needs to be done first, or?
We've got a.
But you got a budget for, good for bridges, I guess we do, right?
We do have.
So we got a special budget, that's what you guys work on for that, right?
Yeah, so we pretty much have a, like, a project list.
We do like one a year, two a year?
Well, that depends, you know, the size of them and everything else.
The size and how difficult, how expensive, probably.
Time, weather, and everything else, yes. You know, we, we do have several projects that we need to get moving if the weather will allow. One is finishing, the one just west of town here, and then we got one up on X-ray that needs addressed sooner than later, but.
Where's that?
Uh, it's just west of one eighty-one on X-ray.
Yeah.
It's not a bridge, I believe it's.
Not mine.
Yeah, it's underneath.
It's a culvert, under, under twenty, under twenty.
It's like a timber.
Oh, God, it's a, it's a large one.
Any bridge that is, the length is less than twenty.
If the clear span on the inside is twenty.
Twenty foot or greater, it's a bridge.
It's a bridge.
Less than twenty, it's a culvert.
Culvert.
Yeah.
Now, is that by law or is that just your, uh, or?
It's the federal highway.
That's a law thing with KDOT or somebody.
It's their classification system.
Okay, okay, thanks, I just getting at.
That was helpful to know, because I keep saying bridges are things, and it doesn't even show them on that.
Well, I don't know all this, though. That's why I asked you, though.
Right.
Nineteen feet, eleven and a half inches is gonna be a culvert.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have to do, anything twenty foot or greater is a bridge, so we have to do the biennial bridge inspections.
Okay.
Um, but that's a mandate by the feds. And then they audit KDOT, so KDOT reinforces it.
Sure.
So it's through KDOT. But, uh, there's a bridge back.
Now, do you do the design for that stuff or do, there's, your, for the bridges?
Yeah, so we designed eighty-seven, uh, reinforced concrete haunch slab. Um, I put together a couple of plan sheets for the bridge that's west of town here.
Okay.
Um, that Michael can kinda use. So I, you know, put together his plan sheets, sheets, kind of generically, so then he can go and use this in the future. So he's not constantly having a pain engineer to redesign everything.
Tanner, what you sent me through the email, did you send that to the other commissioners as well, or was that just to me?
Um.
I can forward that.
I forwarded you the, the road maintenance agreements and that stuff.
And there was like a list of?
Yeah, so that's kind of the stuff that.
Was that just me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I can send that on, pass that on.
Yes, we have a project list, um, and we always try to, you gotta do permits, so we try to get out in front of.
You gotta get state permits for all this stuff?
Yeah, depending on the location.
And then the state inspectors come out and all this?
Not, not really.
Not really?
A bigger, bigger projects, potentially. But the smaller stuff, they usually.
Typically not, you never know.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got a, I don't know if it's of interest to you, Michael, or it may be about from the Lake, Wilson Lake. They send out a, uh, oh, what did I do with that? Army Corps of Engineers are gonna redo, uh, might be, be interesting for both you guys, you could read that. And there's got a meeting coming up, they're gonna redo, uh, the rules of operation, I think, for the lake and the facilities around it and all that, and that may affect some of you guys, I don't know if it affects Lincoln County roads and bridges around the lake, but it, you might be interested about that.
Yeah.
We're having input to it or something, if you want.
Okay, do we get a copy of that?
Yes. Uh, I will make you one here, or I can go get one when I'm done. Yeah, if you, if you can just get one, I'll let you have it, but yeah, if I can get that back, you have a copy, though. And go to the meetings if you guys wants to, I think it's April four. If you got good input around something there.
April four, three, five.
That's all I got, but you guys sort of, I'm gonna hold it right on here.
Two items I had.
Don't know if we should be filling sandbags or not today.
Yeah, we gotta get another inch or two or three of rain about tomorrow, Wednesday, huh?
It may help the roads a little over rain.
It could. I just wish the snow in the ditches would melt its dam several spots up and waters went over where I've never seen water go over.
Oh, yeah, it's so spongy, the path, I'm getting stuck out in the grass, which normally you would never be, you know, it just, it's saturated with water.
Did you have anything else to present to us?
I do.
Okay, uh, my one last question is, do, have we yet responded to some of the questions and concerns we had about the route south of, um, Vesper there?
I have not responded to anybody on it, no.
Was Bob following up on that, or how was that being handled?
I don't believe so. I think we decided that it was addressed to the commissioners and the commissioners would respond and we can give you any information you need, I guess. What, what would you guys like?
Yeah, what do we wanna do about that?
What is again, could you go over again?
We had received a complaint in, in writing, and basically there was concern about the route.
Well, drive.
Yeah, and, and that route around the south of Vesper there, so, and to the, I guess, southeast. What, how are we going to respond? I feel that it's inappropriate to leave it hanging when we had at least ten or twelve people approach us at once about an issue, let alone we shouldn't leave it hanging.
You're talking about the letter about Elk Grove, that and all those people. Well, you guys looked at it, right, Mike, and were trying to address it, getting, uh, bobbling out there, did you? And it's the we- again, the weather with the snow and the ice right now, what, what are you gonna do? You know, until we dry up and you can't, what are you gonna, what are we gonna do? I don't know what they are supposed to do in this current situation with this weather right now, you know? Alexis, what would you say?
Well, I think we need to know what the operator's opinion is of what the issue is. I mean, I think it'd be nice to know from the person who's actually doing the work, what, what they need or what they're not getting, or what, or what their misunderstanding, or what the actual issue is. I mean, every route is going to have its own issues, and if we're, you know, if we're not encouraging them to.
You're talking about the grader driver?
Yeah, I mean, the, what I've found out over the last two years here is that this particular operator on any given route is responsible for a myriad of things. You know, um, not only just maintaining their road with the grader, but also. You know, um, not only just maintaining their road with the grader, but also knowing what needs done, reporting what needs done, keeping track of what has been done. I mean, I don't see that done on an administrative scale as far as any reports to us. So if all of these, if these ten routes are being tracked by each individual operator, then they're the ones with the actual knowledge. So we need to find out what the miscommunication is, you know? Maybe this particular operator thinks there isn't a problem, or, I mean, have you, you're not relaying anything to us as far as what was said. Was there a visitation between management and operator there, or? And what was the dis- discovery?
I wasn't in on all of it, as you know, but-
I went and visited the other day with Bob and Michael, just to get up on what's going on on the road, and he was there and he, he took a little bit of umbrage on this letter, but we, I, we just said, well, do your job, I guess, whatever the policy is for the, how to grade a road, right? But, uh, I don't know, I think he thought he was doing a good job of being a runner greater, so that was his opinion, so.
A lot of experts, but none of them will apply.
In other words, it's a lot easier to go out, it's a lot easier to complain about the roads being bad than to go out and work on them and grade them, so that's, uh-
It's not easy, especially, especially in the last- We could very well use a trainer.
Especially in this last four months with all this weather we've had, it's made it very, uh, difficult.
Well, you made the comment we could use a trainer, I'm not objecting to that at all, I think I said that fifty different ways, but the question is, you know, we've purchased and invested in a program so that we can at least track issues.
That program does not train individuals.
I'm not asking-
And I am working to get that operational.
Thank you.
I think, I think they're working with them, and-
But what I'm getting to is, we've been told that we can't get them to, we can't get some of the employees to engage in the program. So if we can't get them to engage in the program, how are we gonna get them to engage, engage in the training? That's where I'm going with that.
Well.
Where's the disconnect, is my question? How do we find it then? If we don't know what it is, how do we find, I mean, there's gotta be a, a process of elimination here as far as determining what the best course of action should be.
Well, I don't know what I know what you could do, do you have any suggestion?
Well, I think we need to get the program functional so that we can actually visually see what's going on. Because Dan Hayna was in here just last week giving us his annual update and review, and, you know, it looks to me like it would be very rewarding for the department and for Dan if, when he, if, if he's using that program, Mobile Three One One it's called. He said that sometimes he'll go and spray and then it gets mowed the next day, which does his purpose absolutely no good. So if we were integrating interdepartmentally the use of the Mobile Three One One program, he can say, hey, I have just sprayed all of Union Drive, and then the operator, when he logs in, he can see, oh, Dan was here yesterday, I better not mow today. Do you see what I'm saying? That's a communication tool.
I'm not saying that that thing can do that. I don't know, but it might be able to do it, I don't know how you would-
To track where Dan has sprayed? I would think so.
Well, you can maybe coordinate your, so if you, you know, can deal with him, you probably do, but if he's spraying, then you're not gonna be mowing the day later, you know, stuff like that.
Ultimately, you, you should don't start mowing until Labor Day. I mean, if you wanna get a true kill on your weeds, you know, the weed department gets around so much faster than the mower does.
Yeah.
You know, you might need that chemical to sit there for a week.
Well, you do.
He might do an entire, an entire route in a week, so, you know, it, it, it is hard to communicate back and forth some of that. But sometimes it's best to just say, okay, we're spraying now, we're not mowing.
Yeah. Just need to coordinate that, make sure if he's doing that-
You know, when you got two spray trucks going, you know, and you're gonna hit, you know, you don't go by territory. You're gonna go catch a stretch of road and you're gonna go from one end to the other. A lot of times when they're mowing, the mower guy does his territory, he doesn't do the other one.
So how does he know where not to mow, is the question? Cause Dan said it's not just once upon a time that it happened, I mean, it's pretty frequent that you mow off the spray and the spray doesn't get into the roots, I mean, it's that simple. It's kind of basic, you know, common sense.
Well, there just should be some good coordination between Mr. Hayna.
A little bit before Memorial Day, and then we can shut off till Labor Day.
Whatever, but there should be coordination between you guys and him, so if he's spraying, your mower guys know he sprayed it yesterday, so don't mow it. It ain't that hard to get up the phone and talk, or he got a schedule going on, that's all, that should be a difficult to do.
Randy, you can say that, but none of these people are brand new employees, so the question is, why hasn't it been happening?
Well, we need more communication, yeah, we need more communication on that, that's all.
Which is why I'm saying if we have an integrated program where we're saying, check in and find out who's been where, because it'll say, there, you know? They can actually report, I think the best thing to do, Michael, might be to show Randy what Mobile Three One One looks like. You gave us a good demonstration on your iPad, I think that'd be helpful for you to see what that program looks like. It's very, uh, user friendly, so. That was all I had, my question about if we were gonna follow up on that complaint, so.
Tanner, what do you wanna do? I don't have a-
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll go get a copy of this and I'll get it back to you.
Okay, thanks, you just fly it here, whatever.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, Donna, thank you for your patience, I'm sorry we were a little behind going into that session. Did you have anything for us outside of employee evaluation? Okay, wanna start there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Speaking of the rain and the snow and everything, Michael's guys scooped the back and the front, and they know not to pile it in that corner that we have problems with, but now the city piled the snow in that corner. So, anyway, Michael came over, cause when it started melting, we have this huge ice lake. So I had Michael come over a couple of days ago, and he came and, and, and tried to scoop that snow out the most he can and, and got the ice kind of so it would flow, but I just went ahead and had David bring up some sandbags and we sandbagged the back door, cause we were this far from the back door again, and so-
So what you don't want them to do is pile it towards your northeast corner, correct?
Southeast corner.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
At the parking lot.
At the parking lot, in the back, yes, so.
Right, the southeast corner, but it's the northeast corner of the building, right? Is that?
Right, that's the southeast corner of the parking lot, we're talking about the same place where this, yeah, what?
You didn't communicate with the city?
I have not yet, but I will.
I would communicate with the city.
It hasn't, I didn't think it was gonna snow again, so I've been super smart, but I can get on with them, because
If you don't mind-
The time before it was Mike, Michael's guys piled, piled, they didn't know, and they came and cleaned it all out. Now the city did it, probably because Michael's guys weren't there to fill up the hole, so they took, or somebody from the VFW piled it there. I don't know who, but yeah, that's my next course of action, is figure out who's piling the snow over there and have them quit doing that, please. Or put a big sign out there, don't put no snow here, or something, anyway, we, it's taken care of, but I'm just gonna leave the sandbags there because, at the back door. So we can get in and out, and that way if it rains three inches, there's nowhere for it to go, so it's back in my parking lot, so. We'll just keep it full on that way, but Michael did come help with that, so, and David, so just wanted to let you know, they can help me with those things. Um, our grant applications are due every year, March fifteenth, and I've been working on these for some time. Um, the immunization action plan is two thousand dollars. Um, it helps pay for some salaries to attend immunization conferences and for some supplies that are non-medical and maybe some equipment we would need. Um, and it has very little reporting requirements, other than just what did you spend the money on, and, and, um, we let the immunization program know that. Um, maternal child health is, uh, I applied for forty-four hundred dollars, we traditionally have gotten four thousand seventy-nine dollars. The last twenty years, we've gotten the same exact amount, never get anymore. Um, we were audited last week, and from last month, year's application, I've got a score of eighty-five over of a hundred and thirty, which is not very good, but this is the first year they've ever audited us in twenty years, and-
What are they assessing with their audit?
Uh, the application.
Oh, just how you did the app-
How I filled out the application. And a lot of it was more information, more information, more information. I know I've talked to the commissioners prior years that I, it's a lot of reporting and a lot of work for four thousand dollars, and at some point, we're gonna have to say it's not worth it, at some point, I mean, it's taken me four days, about four days of time, about thirty-two hours to fill out this application, and, and I, it's, it's frustrating to me.
Are you the only one that works on it?
Yes, yeah. Um, but some of the questions like, are the brochures that we use for maternal child health, are they evidence-based? Where do we purchase them, how do we know they're evidence-based?
So much minutia, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's very frustrating, to say the least, so, um, I'm gonna apply one more year, but I can't say that I, I feel the value of the time spent with the application and the reporting, plus the reporting for the, the services that we provide, all have to be put in a reporting program for each individual person we see, that it's cost-effective, I mean, there's other stuff we could be spending our time on, so.
You do.
Maybe one more year. Maybe.
Do we, could we join counties to do that? Application like we do, some of the agency work and those kinds?
There might be a possibility, but even with the counties that we join with, I still have to give them reporting.
You'd have to report.
I still have to do it and help them, I have to give them information to fill it out.
It could be an area, it could be-
Not, not as easily as some of the, because this is more, um, uh, one-on-one client services, not general public health. So.
So are other counties dropping out?
Yes, um, Russell has, Osburn has.
The grant through?
K D H E, they're all Department of Environment, and when, when the evaluator was there talking to me, I told her, you know, it's a lot of work for four thousand dollars, and she said, well, I wouldn't blame you if you didn't take it, and I'm like, well, this year I've already spent that much time on it, just try one more year, but if my application doesn't pass, we can, and this is the first year they've evaluated using a tool, I've never gotten a response to any application I've ever done in the last twenty years.
Like just money or not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
But maybe they're trying to-
They are.
Discourage people through-
I just think probably the feds are holding them more accountable.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a lot of-
It's a way to whittle down-
A lot of our grants now have budget explanation pages, you can't just ask for five hundred dollars for supplies. You have to do a budget, a detailed budget explanation that says I'm gonna buy ten reams of paper and so many brochures and this and that and the other, so. So, a, a lot of them have gotten a little tougher, and I know that's from the feds, so, you know, it just gets a little bit redundant at times, but, anyway, public health emergency preparedness, um, last year we got ninety-eight seventy-one, I applied for ninety-eight eighty-two, cause they said they keep it the same, and according to the program that I have to send it in, it rounds the numbers, so that's as close as I can get to as last year, although there may be a cut, we never know. Emergency preparedness is another one of those applications that is, asks for detailed information in the reporting and in the application, so it's, but it's, it pays for a lot of our, um, like our, we have to have broadcast fax, so in order to have that, we used to have a plain old copier, but now we have to have one that will broadcast that, according to the program. We have to have the high-speed internet, well, if we have to have all those things, they're gonna pay for it, and that's what a lot of that pays for. So, you know, I don't mind doing that grant, cause it does cover a lot of things that I don't know how else we would pay for, so. Um, state formula is seven thousand, it's been seven thousand for god knows how many years, a thousand, probably since the state started. Lower counties get seven thousand dollars, so, so the total funds requested are twenty-three thousand dollars. Will we get that much, not necessarily, I think it'll change just a little bit, but that has to be signed by the board commissioners, by the chair.
I would move, chair sign the application for grants, thanks.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the grant application signature page for the Health Department, any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye, aye, none opposed. What is today, the eleventh? Oh, Board of, oh, that's okay. Are we going to have another Board of Health meeting, I found that interesting.
We should, yes.
What do you have, and I'll try to visit two of these guys.
Well, I try to do it once a year in April, I don't know that we got it done last year, but-
No, we skipped a year, but we did it as a, we did it at the end of a commission meeting, which was nice, I don't know if that's gonna be possible again, but that kinda worked out nicely, because we were all here.
And I, I need to schedule that in April, or May, when I'm just not so small. I'm kinda busy right now, but, and then, um, I don't know who's going to the Regional Planning Commission meetings.
Kelly Larson.
Okay, wow. Sherry Angel, who is our regional emergency preparedness coordinator, she is hired by the Regional Planning Commission, but the grant money comes from thirteen counties, through emergency preparedness, and it's, it's, it's split up at the state that way. So much goes to your region and so much goes to each county, and Sherry Angel has been our coordinator since its inception, seventeen years, I believe, or sixteen. She's retiring in May, and I'm on the executive committee, and we are working with Doug McKinney to replace her position. And that should be, I think we should make some decisions today or tomorrow.
What you were gonna say, you were gonna apply?
No. No, it's mostly conference calls, no, it's grant funded, no.
Okay.
When those go away, no. Sherry's wonderful, I, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to replace her, but there will be somebody to replace her coming up shortly, but I have been spending some time, because I'm on that committee, I'm the, I'm the chair actually of that, of that group, so, um, I've spent some time on that, but, I hope we have somebody shortly that's just as good as she is, hopefully, and, but that's all I have.
Are we ready for our executive session?
I wanted to know about opting out of vaccines, that's hit the national news in Washington and Oregon, where it outbreaks of measles. Where is Kansas, where is Lincoln County?
In the state of Kansas, you can opt out for medical reasons, which a doctor has to sign a paper every year. Religious reasons, which is just you saying, my religion does not, if they want to prove anything. Um, and those are the two, only two ways you can opt out in Kansas right now, or not attend a public school.
Or, and what, do you feel, how much is there in Lincoln County that that's happening?
I, I don't know exact numbers, I know there's several, um, that homeschool that don't follow this, the guidelines, they might vaccinate, but at a slower rate, or not vaccinated at all. Some of those are in the school districts, um, for example, we just had a chickenpox case, if, if anybody that had not been vaccinated was exposed, uh, they would be sent home and not be able to send to school for twenty-one days, because that's the incubation period. And if another case came up in the school, they would, from that case, they would extend the twenty-one days out again. So if you had a lot of cases, you could potentially have a child out of school for quite some time.
Would be children that had refused to be vaccinated? Do we have any track of homeschool children at all?
No.
In the state of Kansas?
Uh, maybe, I could, I could look for that information, but, um, I've asked the school district for that information, and they cannot come up with an answer for me for that.
Do we have measles in Kansas?
Not right now, no, there are no cases in Kansas.
Have you followed how many, how many the total outbreak is?
Not, you know, there's like a hundred and thirty, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty typical for any given year, it's, it's always fluctuated right around a hundred per year or more.
Yeah, it's not that, um, it's just more kids are being excluded from school. Because in the case of measles, if there's a case of measles in the building, your child attends school in, they will be excluded from school. Because in the case of measles, if there's a case of measles in the building, your child attends school in, they will be excluded from school. Because it spreads so easily. And, um, there's more kids being excluded from school than are actually getting the measles, I think. Um, and that's what's raising the red flag, is how many kids cannot come back to school and the uproar about that. Well, that's the way the regulations read. You have the right to not vaccinate your child, but you also cannot attend a public school if there is an outbreak of a vaccine. Now, in Lincoln County, I, I do have a contact with someone, there is a homeschool Facebook page that's private. And I do have contacts with someone that I can share information with, that she will post on that page if, if I deem it necessary. So if we would have an outbreak of something that I was concerned about, you know, one case of chickenpox did not concern me too much. But if we'd had twelve or fifteen cases, you know, and it was a concern, I would have asked her to post some information on the homeschool Facebook page. That's the way I am communicating with that group, right now.
The other point of the is, are we educating people of the need to do that?
Yes, and when, when they use our services, they are asked about immunizations. And if they refuse, they have to sign a refusal to be a client at our clinic. They have to sign if they refuse immunizations. Um, part of that was from a case in southern Kansas where a vaccine was refused and a child died of that disease and the Health Department never offered that. So, yes, they did, but it wasn't documented, it was refused. So now we are just, if, if you're a client and you don't want vaccines, you have to sign.
Are we providing information on immunizations, uh, when people are pregnant, I mean, the women?
Yes, yes, we have.
We are doing as much education as we can. I think that's one of the things that they're pointing to in Washington and Oregon, they're questioning whether, uh, people have been given the facts, the scientific background.
Well, and we give the information that we get from CDC and Academy of Immunization Practices. That's what we have, that's what, that's what our policies and procedures are all based on. Um, and that's the same as every other health department in Kansas. And, um, particularly for nurses, um, that, uh, unless it's outright neglect, um, how would you, how would you respond to a situation based on how your peers would respond? So if every health department is using CDC and ACIP guidelines, then that's how we should respond as nurses. So, um, that's what we do. We don't give, you know, there's lots and lots of information out there, but those are the ones that we have to follow. Dr. Dragone is our medical consultant and he has to stand, have, sign standing orders. And they have to be given according to the ACIP and the CDC. He can order it to be given differently, but I won't give it. I mean, we fly without a net, basically, we have standing orders and he's our consultant, but we're on our own. So we have to have a guideline to follow and that's what we follow, so.
Thank you both.
Are, are pregnant women getting vaccinations?
Yes, they should get a flu shot and a T-DAP a couple, uh, in their last trimester.
When did that start?
About four or five years ago.
Four or five years?
Yeah, um, pertussis does not, pertussis is protected for only so many years, but they're trying to, um, if they give it at every pregnancy, the pertussis will be in the infant system and provide some immunity up to twelve months of age. And it's not strong enough, it's strong enough to prevent maybe somebody from getting pertussis, but it's not strong enough over time for a pregnant woman to give the immunity to their baby. So that's why they're recommending that in the last trimester of every pregnancy. And they recommend a cocooning dose for anybody, grandparents, parents, um, anybody that's gonna be around the baby that hasn't had a pertussis-containing vaccine in the last five to ten years. It's kind of a, have to read the guidelines depending on, so. So we do have programs, the IAEP money pays for free tetanus shots for people who don't have insurance that are around a baby. Uh, also.
But you can't correct, you can't get just tetanus.
You can get tetanus and just diphtheria, it comes with diphtheria, yes, that one you can get. Um, and tetanus is in the ground, so, um, tetanus is a, every ten years, unless you have an injury after five years. Most farmers should probably get a tetanus shot every five years because they're gonna get a cut or a scrape or something where dirt can enter it. So that's the recommendation.
You had a case in Nebraska with them?
Right, from an immunized child.
First one in a long time.
Long time, yeah, there's not a lot of tetanus out there, there's tetanus shot, tetanus coverage is pretty good, yeah. And it's not a human-to-human, um, disease, but.
Now, I'll give you, I, I do know a little about that because we castrated cattle. And horse, horse manure, he just carries that tetanus. And I had his steer, they castrated, he went down and laid out in the lot, where my uncle had his horses. And a couple of days later, I hauled him to a, to a place that I put my dead animals in a safe place. But yeah, that was.
Horses are sus- susceptible to a lot of the same diseases we are, so that's kind of.
My uncle didn't pay me for the steer either.
Uh-oh.
Is there a requirement for the, like, licking little kids or before they go to school, get all these shots?
Unless they have a doctor's order or a religious exemption. And there's, there is no religion that exempts immunizations and written, but there's lots of, I mean, you don't have to prove it, so.
Some parents.
Some states say a doctor's, a doctor's, um, um, order is enough not to be immunized. They don't recognize that. And some states also have, a parent can just opt out for any reason. So there's a lot of different differences.
Well, I'm gonna speak to the religion one, actually, if you don't believe in abortion, um, there have been aborted fetal tissues used, uh, not only in some of the, the cell lines that have been passed on through the generations of the creation of vaccines, but also in a lot of the research. And so that definitely touches on the religious standpoint of some of that. So I wouldn't say that I agree exactly with what you said earlier.
Well, they're just saying in scripture, find it.
Well, if you don't believe in murder or abortion and you don't wanna, and if you don't, if you don't wanna participate in anything that is associated with using some sort of, I mean, that's, that's where that comes from. It's not necessarily straight out of scripture, uh, in the Bible.
Well, and I think too, in the last ten, twenty years, uh, suppose there's been some cases, I don't know if it's true or not, but some, supposedly some children got vaccinations, they were fine and all of a sudden got autism. They're, they're linking autism to some of these vaccinations.
That was a study in England on a handful of kids and he lost his medical license and that study's been debunked so many times.
Okay, but, his name is Andrew Wakefield and he didn't say that it causes autism. Wh- what he's, what he said was there were a lot of links between some of the things that were found. And so you, it's, all it is is an assessment of risks. Yes, there are a lot of children that have had debilitating effects from it, they, some have died. And you're risking either way, you're risking if you get.
Either way. What I heard too, the problem maybe an issue was is you'd have a little young baby or, I don't know, one year old, whatever, you guys do it. Uh, that they would give them a bunch of shots or, or all at once and that was an overload on the poor baby. Where now maybe they're giving, spreading those out.
No.
Actually, it's the other way around. When I was a kid, I had very few compared to the schedule that's introduced now.
However, the antigens that are present in the vaccines are at much lower doses. Your babies are exposed to millions of antigens, millions of different things every single day, whatever. When I was a kid, there was prob, I mean, and I don't know the exact numbers, I have the data on that though, but there were maybe a thousand antigens in a tetanus shot. Now in the whole series that's given at one time, there's twenty-three. So when you're exposed to millions daily and you're getting twenty-three from four shots, it's, it's a lot less antigen, but more different, um, vaccines. There's more vaccines, more different kinds of preventative vaccines, but the antigens are much lower.
Well, and I think it's not necessarily the exposure to the antigens, it's the adjuvants and, and the other thing, and the combinations of the, of the different ones that are being com- combined together, so it, you know, it's, it's an experimental phase of.
On both sides.
Right, and it's an experimental phase of humanity because two hundred years ago, we didn't have anything like that. It, I mean, the, that everyone, that anyone was using in a mass amount.
Fifty years ago, we had iron lungs in every hospital and everybody knew how to use them from polio. I mean, we don't have that now.
Or smallpox.
Or smallpox, it's been eradicated except for in labs, so.
Except there's, except it's, third world countries still have it.
Not smallpox, smallpox is only in labs.
Well, I heard there was another version that's come in the United States now, which is similar to.
Monkeypox, monkeypox, that's a whole different, whole different.
Well, and a lot of the polio, I mean, they've just renamed some things that are definitely polio-related. So you, we can't really say it's not out there, I mean, it's still there.
They're still different parts of the strain, yes, there are, but we don't have iron lungs anymore.
Right, yeah, we've become one, now we need a cancer shot.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, I believe the cure for cancer exists, I know I'm on tape, I think it's political and money-based.
I agree with you right there.
Well, there's some people that, there's.
I'll put on that, I'll be on that hit list too.
There are hundreds of billions of dollars being made by cancer being existing.
There's no money to cure cancer, sorry.
So you, some say they don't wanna cure cancer, I don't know, whatever.
I don't know.
Well, that concludes our public discussion. We are going to do the department head evaluation, um, and I guess we would need, what do you think?
Executive session, yeah.
Yes, we're gonna, yes, we're gonna do an executive session to, to go over the evaluation. I'm asking how much time we think we need. It is ten after twelve.
Half hour.
I think that'd be ample. Okay, do you wanna do twenty, or do you think we need the half and a half?
Are you gonna review the board departments as well with her?
Oh, then.
Or do you wanna do that separately?
No, we should do it with her, so let's do, let's do forty, that way we're sure. Do you have those done?
They're in that open practice side, whatever.
Oh, okay, all right, so I will move to recess into executive session for forty minutes for the purpose of discussing Health Department evaluations pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Um, to discuss, number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Um, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the commission and the Health Department, um, department head, Ladonna Ryder.
I will second, but I would like to wait about three minutes before we start.
Sure, take a three-minute recess until we enter.
We gotta go first then.
Huh?
Vote and then we'll take the recess.
Yes, all those in favor vote aye. Aye? None opposed, thank you.
Maybe I will reconvene.
Do you mind pressing the door?
Yeah, thank you.
Qualities they need to work on, so.
Okay, is there anything further that we need to go through with you for Health Department, anything rather? And I will say, I do appreciate you coming and giving us your updates, you've been very faithful about that. And that's helpful for us to even have a clue as to how much is going on with what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're gonna table the discussion on, you're gonna counsel Agent Tom.
Yes, Jennifer was unavailable today. So, uh, did she reschedule or are we just leaving that up in the air? Okay.
That's annoying.
Right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladonna, did you want a copy of yours? Ladonna, do you even want a copy of yours?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
We need a three-hole punch for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. So these can probably be filed for each employee file, hers is on top, it needs a three-hole punch. And so is this what you wanted to, did you do this?
Oh, that's what we gave out to departments, so that was Dee Dee's book, so she got it too. So that's what was given out, that when I said that employees were, or supervisors were provided. I can just take that from the book. Um, supervisors were provided notice of dates, yeah. That just so happened to be hers, but you can keep that.
Okay.
That would be my step in.
He brought one for each.
Dan Haney brought one, that's yours, I'll go.
So that's kinda up to you.
Are we out here or what?
No.
No, we need to do a discussion here, well, what is this? Oh, that's okay.
This'll just be really quick, because you can look at it, this is the time clock. So, um, everything that has a star, sorry, my star didn't copy off very well, so I went back. Everything that has a star is an annual price, everything that is a plus is a one-time price. So down below, your annual cost for, for this particular time clock system would be four thousand one hundred sixteen sixty and a one-time cost of thirteen thousand four twenty-four. With that being said, that's putting a, uh, time clock with a camera. So every time it, um, somebody clocks in or clocks out, has a picture of them. So that way you prevent those employees that are clocking for others.
Does that times how many locations that you have or?
That's five locations, so that would be the Health Department, the courthouse, law enforcement and the highway shop and the ambulance shed. Then they have.
So we're missing landfill.
The landfill, they thought for the cost of it, since there are so few employees, that it might be more beneficial to have them either do the mobile check-in.
Satellite thing, okay.
On the internet, on the.
Yes, or on a computer.
Computer, smartphone.
The problem with the computer is, is that you don't know which employee is going in and logging it in because it can't record it. So if you don't trust the landfill, but you trust the Health Department, or we just put clocks in everything. I did not include one down at the recycling center because, um, there's just two employees, they have no internet. One of the requirements is that they have to have internet for it to communicate. Um, so in your outline shop areas, they would probably have to do, all of them have those iPads. So we could download that app on their iPad and they could clock in there. They do have a telephone option, but it's ten times every, or ten cents every time they call in plus a flat fee.
Well, and then we're getting into the leagues about do we pay for a phone? Because if we're gonna require them to use a phone to do that, then, so, so we have, oh, and, and guess what? There's an iPad at the landfill because of the mobile three-one-one program that Dan Haney is into. So he has an iPad, so that would be the remote location there.
And, and what happens with that is, although it doesn't necessarily, it may not prevent them from clocking in for each other, but basically you put the fear of God in from, in with them. But yeah, they could clock in with that.
I mean, if they're gonna do that, then they're risking both people's jobs, so that's not even.
But they geofence it, so either A, we could geofence it, or B, it would click where it would, it would give you.
Geofences in a certain radius of the central location of the.
Yes.
Okay.
Or they can do a GPS timestamp and you, then you look at the GPS location and see whether it's not, whether or not they're at the landfill. So that's how the mobile app portion of it works. So like, let's say for example, let's say the ambulance people, we have a time clock here, but they start clocking in on their phones because they're out on emergency. If they clock in out of their phones, it's going to put the GPS location. Or if we tell it, he said it's an either or, or we say you have to be in the geofence of the ambulance shed. He said now you, they could be across the street on the neighbor's porch and probably be within the geofence because it's based on Google Maps. But he said they're not gonna be at their home and be able to clock in. It's gonna say that you're not within the parameters of the building in order to be able to clock in. So those are the types of things for the mobile. I don't know how you guys feel, but they, they did say that they have one person that has a dumb phone, so I really feel like they need a time clock to clock in on and then. So I really feel like they need a time clock to clock in on, and then the ambulance shed.
Oh, I think it needs to, because the whole point, the whole justification we've received for having so much coverage throughout the twenty-four hour day is because they need to be able to leave in five minutes. So there's no point in not having it at the shed. I mean, that's the whole hub. Now, is this the program that is, that that will co-sync with Comtech?
Y- yes. Um, and Comtech has contacted them. Now, there will be a price for Comtech's fee, but Larry wasn't in when I called and they said they'd have it sometime this week. But he said it's a, it's gonna be a nominal cost for the program compared to what we're gonna pay for this. Um, and then there will be like an annual maintenance fee for the neighborhood revitalization program. I think we pay a thousand dollars a year for the neighborhood, or for the maintenance fee and the updates and things like that for the Comtech program, because it's a special program.
Oh, okay.
That's outside of the normal round. So there, I, I'm thinking maybe no more than a thousand dollars annual fee from them. I just don't know what the actual cost is to, but basically what he's done is he's already got the data set that he needs from their system to to link it into ours. Now, they also have a leave time management program, which, this is a novel idea. The employees actually ask for time off, but through this program, it requires the employees to ask for time off.
Submit their request.
Yes, and then the department head approve their time off. Instead of them just calling and saying, I'm not gonna work today.
Then you got a paper trail too of what's going on.
Yes. And so, um, this program does have that, um, and on the backside is about the time plus manager. They can also go down to even like the highway department if you wanted to. Um, the program comes with all the nuts and bolts, but they could do job assignment type things. Like where, um, right now, the highway department is writing time in, time out, or, and then they're writing what they're doing. Most of theirs says bleeding roads.
Is that in the software, or like the app that you download? Like if you were doing it from an iPad, you could put in your location for the day, or, or whether you were
He said he, it tracks it by jobs. So my assumption is, is like when they say they're bleeding territory, whatever, that they could clock in and say they're bleeding, and then if they ended up fixing something, they could change jobs.
Yeah, here it says change job code. So, yeah, that makes sense.
So some, he said some, some employers require that. You know, I can see where the highway department might find that beneficial, but I just don't know if we're to that point yet. Maybe it's like we get the time clock system in and then
I would do the time clock first without all this other stuff.
Yeah.
It's too much overwhelming to begin with.
But I think it's, it's basically, it's a selling plan.
No, you would have the capability though.
Yeah, yeah.
And now, the whole thing, so bottom line is, we're gonna, they could clock in, this information's coming to you here? Or or to a payroll contact, they're doing a payroll now, this?
No, no, we would still do payroll.
Yeah.
Um, this is what the gentleman said. He said they have a business of five hundred and some people. He said it takes them, basically, he has so many hours after the time period ends to check his time for the previous time period, to make sure everything's right, yet it doesn't have any errors. Then he approves it, it goes to a supervisor. His supervisor then approves it. He said, now, for example, if one day I forgot to clock out at lunch, and when I came back in, I went to clock in and it said, well, you didn't, you didn't clock out before, then he gives an exception and he sends his supervisor a note that said, I forgot to clock out for lunch. Here's the time that I went out. And he said, number one, it gives them communication. Gives them, the supervisor, the opportunity to communicate with the employee and vice versa. Because he said sometimes like in businesses that's his size, sometimes they don't communicate at all. But it gives them a chance to communicate. But then the the supervisor has to approve and enter the exception. So I'm assuming like in the highway department, might you say, that the secretary or
If it shows that they worked overnight, obviously it's just because they didn't clock out. So then you get to talk about that time and hand, make a hand note. And then that would help the HR person as well, because when you do have anomalies, they're already accounted for. You don't have to figure out what that anomaly is every time.
And and that's what he said. So then at the end of that time period, then the supervisor looks at the time and has to approve the time to go on to us. And then once it's approved to get to payroll, then we do our part of it and it creates the file that we then upload into Comtech and then we push everything through.
So you already have a pre-calculated number for every employee this way. And then you're just checking the math from there on. You're not recalculating with, yeah, that skips a whole step.
If they all fill this out every day, then the information comes to you immediately every day.
Their supervisor.
Their supervisor. Oh, and and so, so if it's like Lincoln Highway Department, it would come to their supervisor in within that for the week or for, and then they'll dump it all to you once a week or once a month or something.
I take it that I have access to everything.
Yeah, you should have access to it.
I should double check, but I won't pull information until the end of that period.
Then you download and you're uploading from one to the next.
If you did have access to it and you see that some employee isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, you could get a list of supervisors and say, hey, employee A isn't clocking in correctly last two days. You better fix this, right?
Yes.
That way you can have a little oversight too.
Yes.
Before you get it all to the end of the month and it's all mess.
Yes.
No, I think it'd be good.
And then the employees aren't doing their time card, like say at the end of the week, trying to remember what they did for the week and when they took off. Now, um, with that being said, there are still some issues that we have with the estimating time. So I want you guys to kind of regurgitate this this week, and I should have made copies of this for for you guys each week. But we'll just look at the month of April, for example. So technically, on the month of April, sorry, we have to have payroll to the bank one and a half days ahead of time. So one and a half days. So it has to be through the twenty-sixth. Let's say we were to implement this system. There's not enough time to pay through the twenty-fifth and get all the approval that needs to be done. So parts of me says what we need to do is move that cutoff period anyways, like we talked before. Um, this gentleman said he works with governments. And I kind of liked his idea. I just don't know how capers will fly with it. But next month, for example, March twenty-sixth through April twenty-fifth is a large month. So we are, or should pay out our employees a hundred and eighty-four hours. Maybe this is the time to move that moving date forward. He said he just did a school district that did it over a three-month period of time. They needed to move it up three days.
They did one day at a time.
One day each month. Um, I, I think if we had two more days, that we would be okay. The question I had is, would it be better to move a day and change pay pay date to the first of each month? Or keep it on the last working day of the month? And I don't know how that would affect employees. It doesn't affect me at all, because all my bills come due the first day of the month. I never rely on that check to drop in there. But some employees may have some of their bills coming due the last working day in which it would be.
But isn't it deposited on the last working day?
It is right now.
So that's pretty tight to have something coming out that day and going in that day.
When does the direct deposit go in now, end of the last day of the, working day of the month?
Yes, the last working day of the month. So it's something to think about. I had originally, Hannah and I were talking, like if we moved it up two days this month, that would have them being paid for a hundred and sixty-eight hours. This pay period right now is a hundred and sixty hours. Last month it was a hundred and sixty-eight. Um, it's still on the shorter side of the pay periods, but
But it's still closer to what the normal income is, rather than leaving the hundred and eighty, that eighty, what?
A hundred and eighty-four is what's available this next month. And I have not talked to capers. I started to call them today and then got a telephone call and then I forgot what I was doing. But, um, I want to call capers and see, because we have to certify those deadlines, so I don't know how hard that is to move those. Um, but I, I just kind of want to throw that out there, because at some point in time, we have to change something up, especially if we're gonna make this system work.
I think we can
But you need to know here, within March, right, to get a discount here, right?
Yes. So ironically, apparently this guy's boss is a big March madness guy. So during the month of March, he offers a ten percent discount, and then on Cyber Monday only, a ten percent discount. Those are the only two discounts that they have per year. So he said, if you're gonna do it, Cyber Monday or the month of March. And if we want to wait a year, you know, the month of March.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about this long enough, we can make a decision. And we know that this is what's going to go with the system that we have. We're not gonna change Comtech. I mean, you're integrated in that system. We've been using it for how long? We have good, uh, reliable service calls on them. So I think we need to move forward with that. I think we just need to give you the authority to move forward with that.
This company's gonna do all the hardware installation everywhere and test the system out, make sure it all works fine and all that?
It, it comes with hours, but I take it that it's just a plug in and then somebody, you know, communicates with
Yeah, they have to set up this hardware and all these sites we're talking. And then they better make sure it works, so it talks to you, you know, you, you know.
I, I think some of it's, we're gonna be doing our homework.
Believe me, I've worked beauty craft twenty years and believe me, you always think it's simpler until you do it. Then there's a lot more stuff that blows up and doesn't
Well, in Comtech, they suggested that we do a side-by-side where we do time clocks, but we also do manual. But this guy said that might really confuse the employees totally. But he said he could understand where, you know, maybe we give them the hours and they import it in and we
And we want to make sure it works, then the first month or two, you're gonna have bugs in it.
Yeah.
Where it won't work.
And that's what Sean wants to get. He wants to do bugs before the new person gets in. Because he said it's harder to learn a system if you have nothing but problems the first day you start.
Sure, you're going to initially.
So he said, I'd rather you deal with all the problems than to have the employee.
But I still think it's good timing, because it's new to everyone. So it's not like you have a new person learning something new that's seasoned to everyone else. I think that's good timing for everything. Let's move forward. Where do you want to put it in the courthouse?
I thi- we were thinking, it needs to have a power outlet and it needs to have connection to, uh, either wifi or ethernet line. We were thinking by the back door, by where the water fountain is at, just hang it on the wall. And, um, the picture of it is
I saw, I saw.
Yeah, as big as it is, so.
Yeah, that's not bad.
And it mounts. Um, I will have to go and look at each of the departments and figure out where they could have access. There is an additional charge if we do power by ethernet, meaning that you plug in the ethernet cord and it draws power. There's a two hundred and eighty dollar connection to there. But he said some businesses, they don't want to call an electrician. So he said if there is not a power outlet near the best place, then he said that's an option that they can do, but it's another two hundred and eighty dollars per unit. But I think
Total for everything?
Uh, per unit for the power by over ethernet. POE is what they call it, power over ethernet. Um, but I think everywhere we go, we can surely find a place where it has a power unit. So the question that I have is, is, do you guys want to do a time clock at the landfill? Or do you want to do the mobile?
I think we should do the iPad. I mean, let's use those. We are paying good money.
The mobile.
Okay.
Because, uh, time clock could cost a lot more, right? And it's, there are only several employees out there. And, yeah, it's just simpler with mobile. They got iPads, right?
They have one iPad, so they'll just have to bring it out and have it in the room.
They'll have, yeah, that's my opinion.
And and your motor greeters and that, how many places have iPads? The only thing is with that is we probably would have to load it on each iPad. So then that way, if employee A is gone, they can't say, well, I didn't want to turn on employee A's iPad.
You gotta install the app on each one. That shouldn't be that much, is it? No. I would do that, yeah.
Okay. And the five locations that we have, is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
You're gonna do sheriff's department, highway department, here, here, and, uh,
Ambulance shed.
EMS and, uh,
Health department.
Health. Is that the, hospitals on their own, right there?
Yeah, they're not part of us. Um, and the dedicated service support hours to twenty, that is what they think that it will take to get us up and going. And then after that, once we get up and going, they give us like a three-month buffer. Then it, it takes over on this annual support.
Are they gonna do a training session with the, uh, department heads and employees on how to run this thing?
I don't know, but I can ask that question.
Because somebody needs to tell them how to run it. Because you can't just set it up and say, use this time clock. They're gonna, what the hell's that?
Scan your people.
So we better have a little educational, we should have an educational session, how to use a time clock, you know, and, you know.
Proper procedure, yep.
Well, this is electronic too. It's not punch punching.
No.
It ain't the old card where you punch the deal.
No.
They still got that, most of it.
They will poke in their code.
Yeah, okay. We should have a little training session. Obviously, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be that complicated, but still, they should train everyone how to do it and ask them if that goes with it.
Yeah.
Because that may be another, who knows what. So, okay.
Okay. That's a good question, because I kind of
You gotta teach them how to run this stuff and correctly run it.
So
So I will ask about installation and, um, training.
Yeah, and I think we need to not have to have discussions about it, because today is the eleventh. So I'm just going, I think we need to appoint you to implement it. Does that sound okay to you, Dawn?
Yes, that's fine.
Can you vote on it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, or someone else wants to make the motion.
You can, you know how to do it.
I move to appoint county clerk to implement the time clock plus system with Comtech, including purchases and coordination and logistics.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for this system that Dawn found that is, um, going to be able to work with our current system that we have called Comtech. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Dawn, just for curiosity's sake, how did you hear about this time clock plus company?
Well, ironically, Riley County has this, which is also linked with Comtech. However, since talking with Sean a little bit more, Riley County has gone to a different, um, payroll system and time clock system since we talked the last time. But he said now they're working on importing all the ledger details. So it is, it is possible to do it. It's just that it doesn't flow as easily. So he said, as I was visiting with him some more, he says, you know, that's funny that, that, he says, I told you that. And he said, I really wasn't thinking in the long run that they had already switched with, and did something different. But I still think that we can make this work and, um, I don't know. Riley County is a lot bigger county, so I can see where they might have a lot more. And it sounds like we're going to be very easy, because most of our employees get paid out of the same fund. Very, very rarely do they get paid out multiple funds. And and he said that's where it gets more complicated at, the
Right, how do you divide up hours for, and then make them one check out, yeah, separate funds?
So, um, and I told him, I said, the majority of this now, like, right now, Hannah, if she works the election, we take her time for overtime out of the election. But I said, I can bill, just like I'm doing ambulance. We can just fill that out.
Yeah.
And be that way.
Like interdepartmental billing kind of concept?
So, um,
Okay. Do we have any more discussion about what we do, want to do with the commission room? We're gonna, you are going to follow through and see if they will make us a tabletop.
I will do that.
And, um, and then we need to remove the line that they had put in for a separate phone line, and do we need to run any kind of?
I think like right now, the telephone, I'm gonna just not do, um, okay. Let's talk about the telephone system for a little bit, because Hannah just told me the bill went up again to like seventy-six dollars per line. So
Per line in the courthouse?
Per line for each county. I think we have thirty-some lines. So, but that's just the base charge. So we have the department heads meet, and we had Wilson Communications, Eagle Communications, and the phone connection come and visit with them about what is our needs and what do we want to do. Next tech has the ability of doing, everything is, seems like is over the internet. Now, Eagle was originally just proposing bringing in, and you have to excuse me, because I'm gonna sound completely stupid here, but bringing in some kind of thing that they would take over the telephone lines and they would install it. And I think they call it a PCI. And then our phone system will connect to that PCI and network out. The only problem is, is that only occurs here. And the cost of it was like three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and originally they said it would be so much per line that Robert told me it'd be just three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Um, so I think what we're gonna do is just stay with the phone system that we have currently. Even though if we did over, over the internet, we could probably have even more savings. But it just seems like all of us are a little bit hesitant in about what we want to do. So they can bring that in, let's say, tomorrow, install it, the phone connection will come out. There will be some requirement for some new equipment, because it's different technology. But our phone system itself is, is, will probably last another hundred years. There's nothing wrong with it. It's the lines to it that will start deteriorating before the phone system itself. So, um, he wants to know the phone connection So, um, he wants to know, the phone connection guy, exactly what Robert is suggesting. Exactly what the cost is gonna be, because he said he knows that another county got it for three hundred and fifty dollars, and he's gonna hold Eagle to that, because he knows what their pricing is. Um, they originally had said two hundred and fifty plus thirty-five dollars per line, but then Robert was saying, no, just the three ninety-nine. And, and so I need to get it in writing, I sent him an email today. Then, like, the recycling center, we just need to have them take over the AT&T line. And actually, the recycling center, they can't do, because they don't have internet. Any place that has internet, they can take a little longer, because they're basically gonna go in over the internet part of it. So, uh, the landfill will become an issue. The recycling center is an issue. The health department has NCKCN right now, once they go to Eagle, then they can go over the internet and do Eagle telephone. Um, the highway department has NCKCN, and then they're in the same boat, if I understand them correctly. The sheriff's department has, um, Eagle already, so they could bring in their piece, and they'll connect it to the phone system. So we just have to figure out which, where we're going. And then those departments, like the recycling center, I don't think they need a phone, so I think we'd be okay just to shut it off completely. Uh, the landfill, we're gonna have to do something. Um, they suggested maybe us put a cellphone out there. Port the telephone number to a cellphone, um, which is a possibility. So. They also have what they call these little home devices, that you can port the number into, and it just works in all of your telephone jacks. Now, it wouldn't work here, because we have a phone system, but out there they don't have. So it basically plugs in, and it works their telephones just like it is now. It's just a matter of, do we do that through Eagle, do we do that through Next Tech, do we do that through Verizon? So. I don't know.
So do you just need to get back to us with?
Yes, with a price and a plan and a tag, because we gotta get off of AT&T. I just, I don't know how to make it happen everywhere.
Okay.
And I don't know, if, they sound like they can't do it if it's NCKCN, because that's a wireless, so they can't take them to phone, but. I know Leon wanted me to give Hannah Laddana's information, which I'll do that, so you can talk to her a little bit more, because she has a unique situation, her phone system is starting to fail, and the people that they bought it through, I guess they can't get parts for anymore, so.
Just out of curiosity to change the subject though, did you get any feedback from the newspaper article on?
Well, yeah, I have. Have you got any input here from the newspaper article?
I just had, it was awful small, and they couldn't read it, and I scored them the email, or the, like, the original. And then one person asked if I'd print it, but that was only I think I printed two in.
I saw that too, it looked very small on the Lincoln paper, I didn't realize that when we had talked about. Because in Sullivan's paper, it was huge, and it was like a full page.
I know, the Sullivan paper told me that the font size was, the font choice was not newspaper friendly. And so she was, um, struggling, and I said, well, I can change the font, but she was afraid that that would change it from.
Like a format, yeah.
Yeah, and so I said, okay, and, um.
It was okay.
Lincoln, I think, just naturally has a smaller print, but.
I have to get your reading glasses on.
Well, I mean, if it prob, if it probes enough curiosity, they'll call and ask questions, or get some kind of more information, but I think it's a good start.
Well, I have some input, people said they're glad we did that, because now.
It's at least being addressed.
Well, they know where, where we're at here. But people didn't know what was going on, and that's, you know, when you don't know what's going on, then at least we said where we're at, what we're doing.
Right.
And that, at least it got an issue, and a kind of a feeling where we're, where we're doing it.
Anything else that you need from us today, Dawn?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you for all the information you put together for us.
Yeah.
I will adjourn meeting until next Monday, March eighteenth, ten AM, in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
This year's lectures?
Yes.
You want this?